Welcome and good evening. This is the Pleasantville Village Board meeting of Monday, April 13. If you're watching live on Monday, April 13, we welcome you to call in if you have comments or questions. Our caller number is 769-1677. As always, you can watch us live on Verizon or Cablevision Cable TV or at PCTV76.org. And within a couple of days, an on-demand webcast bookmarked by subject will also be available at PCTV76.org. Our next scheduled meeting is a work session on Monday, April 20, and our next regular meeting is a week later, Monday, April 27 at 8:00 with a work session at 7:00. So, a couple of announcements to make, one of which is we met earlier with our recycling committee in work session, and I wanted to remind the community that in addition to the many great things that the recycling committee does, worth a visit to PleasantvilleRecycles.org. They let us know that they will be kicking off their now, I think, third annual used sports equipment and bicycle swap. Saturday, May 2 from 9:00 a.m. to 3:00, the lot of the new Henkels warehouse, the former MLA adjacent to the ball fields on One Village Lane, that's the parking lot that people use for the fields, will be the site of a collection for any sports equipment and bicycles in any condition that you are interested in getting rid of. And then on Pleasantville Day, Saturday, May 6, from 10:00 to 3:00, they'll have a booth and give all that stuff away to people who can use it for free. So, get yourself to PleasantvilleRecycles.org and be reminded of this great opportunity to get rid of that old stuff in your house, but also equip you and your kids with new stuff you might need that somebody else didn't need. So, thanks to the Pleasantville Recycling Committee for that. I also wanted to mention, we were visited by Devon Juroz and his father, two of the key players in the Pleasantville Community Garden, which is a garden that they established last year in the side yard at St. John's Church on Sunnyside Avenue. They're now also taking advantage of extra food that would otherwise go to waste from the farm market, as well as the garden at the Pleasantville Middle School, which will now be used to grow vegetables, and in the next year, the garden at the high school as well. Just an extraordinary project extraordinarily results with tremendous volunteer resources, producing last year over 1,500 pounds of fresh produce that was donated to the Hillside Food Pantry. They have a goal of doubling that to 3,000 pounds this year, so really a great, great project. Congratulations to them and thanks to everybody who helped with that. And then lastly, I want to remind everybody that July 11 is the date of the 11th Annual Pleasantville Music Festival. PleasantvilleMusicFestival.com is a great place to go to find out what's going on, and very shortly, they'll be starting to announce some of the details about the lineup and the logistics. It's really a great, looking like a great year, so I look forward to all of that. We have a couple of big things going on tonight, one of which is a presentation from Mike Gordon at Sustainable Westchester about a community choice aggregation program, which provides an energy, alternate energy buying opportunity for the village should we elect to participate in it. He'll give some descriptions of that, and then we'll invite any comment. If anybody has any questions or comments, we'd be happy to hear it. And then after that, morph to Patty Dwyer, who will be doing a presentation on our tentative 2015-2016 fiscal year budget. Our fiscal year runs from June 1 to May 31, so we're ramping down the last couple of months of the current fiscal year, and the budget we're working on right now, which we need to approve in its final form by the end of April, is the subject of the presentation tonight. So, for starters, welcome Mike Gordon from Sustainable Westchester. Come on up and fill us in about the community choice aggregation program.
Okay. Should we use the mic?
Yeah. You need to use that mic. You can pick it up out of the stand if you want.
Yeah.
Because that's going out for the TV audience, even though it's not going out here. You can pick it up out of there if you prefer.
Thank you, because I...
Being more formal, informal.
Okay, great. So, what I'm gonna do is I'm just gonna, we're not gonna actually take you through any formal PowerPoint. What I'm gonna do is just really talk about community choice aggregation, how it works, and answer any questions.
So, watch it. Sort of. Yeah, well, we can kill those lights when the time comes to be looking at that. Is now the time?
It's now the time.
Sure, sure.
All right. How about this? We'll kill the lights and we'll move that way, so you're all facing the same direction. You have to live with a split light.
So, basically, whenever they're killed, they're killed. So, I'll basically describe what community choice aggregation is, and then we'll answer any questions. But I think that what Glenn is going to do, Glenn Weinberg, who is a Sustainable Westchester volunteer, is he's gonna try and find the appropriate slide that answers whatever question. So, we're gonna be toggling between and among slides. So, just as orientation, I am co-chair of Sustainable Westchester. Pleasantville is a member, is a dues-paying member of Sustainable Westchester. One of the things that we are focusing on is bringing significant and great value to the individual municipalities who are members, and this is one of those opportunities. I should say that I am a volunteer. I do not get paid for this. And so, just so that you know, the benefit from this process is simply that we can bring some value to the municipalities and help make something real that we have envisioned making real for a number of years. So, community choice aggregation, the way it works is that the, we are currently, so our electricity bill is currently actually two bills. We pay for, even though it's consolidated into one bill, we pay for our delivery charges, poles and wires, and the delivery of that, those electrons over those wires. And we also pay for the energy itself, which is generated by the power plants, and that then is transported over those wires. And one is a regulated piece, and that's the poles and wires. So, everybody here works with Con Edison. Everybody here pays for your transmission and distribution to Con Edison, and there's just no way out short of condemning the wires, which we have no desire to do. There's no way out of that. And in fact, Con Edison's specialty is, in essence, reliability. The second piece of that bill, of your electricity bill, is the energy itself, and that is a competitive market. However, the way it works currently, if you do not specify who you want to be with for your electricity power, Con Edison will also serve you. So, it's an opt-out process currently, where in order to get away from Con Edison for the electricity, for the power actually, you actually have to actively opt out. And so, what community choice aggregation does is it switches that paradigm, so that instead of the regulated utility being the supplier of default, instead, it becomes the community choice aggregator. You still have the ability to go to the utility. You still have the ability, in fact, to work with other competitive suppliers. You still actually, the utility, if you choose to default back, there's no issue with defaulting back to the utility. And we'll actually talk about some of the interesting benefits that that brings. And I'm really here to just present this, so you can make a judgment as a municipality whether you want to participate. So, I will give the facts, and then you guys can choose to obviously do what it is that you want to do. But the basic concept is because we default to the utility for our electricity rates, and because the utility is not permitted to make any money on the electricity sales, the utility in fact doesn't really want us as customers for the actual electricity. They definitely want us for the poles and wires and for the transmission and distribution, but they really don't want us as a customer. Furthermore, the utility is not allowed to offer fixed rates to consumers who want fixed rates. And so, the, in essence, what this is, is this is harnessing the power of the free market and allowing us to pull together a very large aggregation of buyers, creating a good deal of clout, therefore allowing us to negotiate better rates on our electricity and in fact natural gas. And some of the numbers that I've been getting from suppliers as indications of interest are remarkable numbers that we may be able to achieve. Back of the envelope, just on natural gas alone, our estimate is that there's roughly $38 million to save countywide on the delivery of natural gas just for homeowners. So, a lot of people say that, or some folks say, that the reason that people don't choose to buy from competitive suppliers...
...the Verizon watcher, oh, we've lost the picture. The sound just came back. It's a test pattern color. It's going to the community organizations.
He's working on it right now.
Okay, we're all working on it right now.
Okay, cool. So, folks say that the reason people don't switch to competitive suppliers, because 75% of the people do not switch to competitive suppliers even though they can. And some folks say that the reason people don't switch is laziness or ignorance. In fact, that's not true. The reason that people aren't switching is quite sensible. It's that the rates that you as an individual home can get are nowhere comparable to what you're gonna get with scores of millions, perhaps hundreds of millions of dollars of electricity purchasing in aggregate. And that'll also allow us to fix rates for a longer period of time. Yeah?
If Con Ed is buying power for 2.5 million customers, why would they have the same buying power?
Could I ask the whole questions? Not, not, we certainly want to hear them, but people at home can't hear the question without the mic. So, if we can, Mike, you finish your thing, we'll put the lights back on and then we'll end it. Then we'll pass it around.
Yeah. And I guess I'll take a crack at that, which is that...
Do you want to repeat it?
Yeah. If, so the question is, if Con Ed is buying power for many millions of folks, why don't they have that same buying clout? And in fact, Con Ed is quite limited in who they can buy from, and how they can buy, and how much money they can make. So, in fact, Con Ed has to buy directly through auctions for a certain amount of their purchase, which is detrimental. Con Ed cannot offer fixed rates to customers, and Con Ed doesn't make any money, so there's no real motivation there. So, that's the troika of why Con Ed... And on average, folks are saving with free market suppliers, somewhere between 5% and 10%. And in some cases, in Illinois, it was 25% for a short period of time, and now it's more modest. But in fact, the utilities, the difference between a community buyer and a utility is that a community buyer is responsible to the community. And so, basically, the structure is a free market approach to getting savings and fixing rates, and that's pretty straightforwardly what it is. So, I'm gonna, I guess, pause there and then just invite questions, and I'm sure there are clarifications as well, so I'll...
I'll just put the lights on. We're done with...
Sure.
...looking up at this screen, so, all right.
So, they're gonna, yeah, they're gonna have to come and ask their question into the mic as well.
Oh, okay. So, I'll leave it right here.
And then you'll have to answer into the mic.
Cool. All right. So, if, let's see if any of the board members have questions for starters, and then we'll toss it open to the audience. I'm gonna ask if you have a question to come up to the mic, because people who are watching at home can't hear it unless, unless you're at the mic. So, anybody here want to explore questions?
Well, yeah, I had just, I mean, I have a bunch here, but I'll just lead off with a question about, in your presentation, I think, further on in a different slide, you mentioned that the CCA can add a surcharges in to, you know, incentivize smart thermostats and stuff like that. And this may be jumping way ahead of everybody, so I apologize for that, but does that have a process to it?
Yes.
Is there a notice period?
Yeah.
I mean, what is, they can't just change the rate?
Yeah, no way. So, what we are doing, and we haven't gotten approval from the Public Service Commission to add any energy efficiency surcharge.
Okay.
But what we want to do is consult with member municipalities, and if we are saving, for instance, a couple of pennies, a kilowatt, let's say we have a fixed rate and the utility rate goes way up, and we're saving a couple of pennies per kilowatt hour, what we'd like to do is propose to municipalities that we do take a portion of that 2 cents, maybe 2/10 of a penny, 3/10 of a penny, and actually create a surcharge which allows for energy efficiency, in essence, rebates and incentives.
Right, so create incentive programs to get people to use more power-efficient appliances and things like that.
Yeah. We have to get approval from the Public Service Commission in order to do that. And the way we're thinking about doing that is offering that to the municipalities, so that if the municipalities want to participate, they can. In fact, they can run the program themselves if they'd like to have that rebate incentive program run out of the municipality, or we can run it centrally out of Sustainable Westchester up to the municipality.
And would PSC have to approve each one of those things, or just the blanket, yes, you can charge a surcharge to incentivize behavior?
Yeah, they would approve the blanket, yes, you can charge a surcharge, and then we would go to the individual municipalities. But they would approve it on the terms that we presented it to them.
Right.
So, we're gonna present it to them as the municipalities will have a choice if they want to, and they will then say, okay, you can, you may do that, but it has to be consistent with the terms that you've outlined here.
Understood. Thank you. I will have more. I will have more, not yet. Anybody else?
So, Mike, I just, one of the concerns that we've heard in the community is that this is an opt-out program, so just let me go through my understanding of it, and you correct me if I'm wrong about any aspect of this. The plan, if we participated, would include, for starters, only residents who are with the default supplier Con Ed.
Yes.
If you have already...
Unless others want to join and actively affirmatively say they want to join.
So, anybody who's already signed up with an ESCO wouldn't be included unless they affirmatively chose to, and...
Yes.
The arrangement with some ESCOs people may have signed up for is that there could be penalties to leave.
Yeah.
So, that raises the question about the Sustainable Westchester plan. Would the, would the RFP you put out say there can't be any penalties for leaving?
Yeah, and that actually was a piece in our submission to the Public Service Commission because we're looking, we're creating a really interesting thing here. There are no penalties for leaving at any time, so they can simply call up to opt out of the, the community choice aggregator, and then they can...
Who would they call?
They would call the utility itself.
Con Ed.
To say they wanted to...
In order to get out of the ESCO that they're in for whatever ESCO Sustainable Westchester would choose with their RFP, they would call Con Edison?
Yes. So, what that creates is a really interesting opportunity, because with us getting a fixed rate, and we are thinking that we're gonna be focusing on getting a fixed rate, folks can opt out at any point. So, if the utility rate ends up going down, they can opt out, join the utility. If the utility rate ends up going up, they can stay with the fixed rate. So, what that creates is an effective cap on rates and an opportunity to continue to take advantage of rates as they go down.
How would they know the rate went down?
We, we're required to report on the comparable to the Public Service Commission and as well to the municipality.
So, you would, you would report, how often would you do that?
We're required to do every, every year, but the way we're intending to do it is monthly, but because the utility has a look-back provision, so the utility can actually adjust your rate for a month or two after you've actually paid it, there's likely gonna be a little bit of a lag.
So, how do you get that information to the resident?
It's, it's on a website.
So, they have to actively go look for it?
Yeah, and they're, they're gonna have that, you know, they'll have that link, and they are free to access it. As a matter of fact, the intent is to build an individual website for each municipality.
But it doesn't show up on their bill anywhere, obviously, right?
No, there's no, there's not what they call the PTC, Price to Compare. There is no PTC that's actually on that bill itself.
And so, just to be clear, because this was another point of question I got, this plan, like any other ESCO, you continue to get a single bill from Con Edison.
Yes.
And if you pay attention to your bill even now, which breaks out, as you said, the energy part versus the distribution part, and the maintenance of your meter and resolution of problems and coming to put you back online after a storm is still all Con Ed?
100% Con Ed. We do have, we will have folks, customer service folks, who will work cooperatively with Con Ed to support, because people are realistically, they're not necessarily gonna understand completely every detail, and so we're certain that we're gonna be getting some calls from residents.
At Sustainable Westchester.
Yeah, absolutely.
Right.
And then we would, so we will work cooperatively and collectively with Con Ed. And in fact, in preparing the program, Con Ed has been remarkably cooperative. It's almost, they've, they've said that we're getting questions from Con Ed, like, I'm just asking this question because it's so interesting, you know? They're really engaged.
And of course, the issue with Con Ed, correct me if I'm wrong, is that they don't really want energy customers. They want distribution customers.
Nope.
So, then the, the other navigation of this is that at the point at which we hypothetically approve this, again, I'll just spin out my understanding of it. You tell me if I'm wrong.
Good.
Hypothetically, the village includes, decides to include itself in your RFP, you guys with professional advisors solicit bids and assess them, decide which one is most favorable.
Collaboratively with the municipalities.
Right.
Yep.
And then residents in our community who are currently Con Ed energy customers would receive a mailing that would describe the transition and indicate that if you don't want to be a part of it, if you wish to stay with Con Ed, you do what?
You can, may either...
You gotta be at the mic, Mike, sorry.
You may either call or postage-paid reply return.
Okay, and that's, again, back to Con Ed.
Yep.
Can I interrupt you for a minute?
Sure.
You won't have any kind of online opt-out mechanism?
The online piece is, no, I don't think so.
Because that would have to connect to Con Ed's database, I guess.
Yeah, I mean, I'll ask Con Ed about that, but I don't think so realistically, you know? The, they're keeping costs quite low, and between, we're not sure whether it's gonna be $100 to $500 for all the data per town, and then Sustainable Westchester is gonna cover that. So, it's possible that if we were to do things like that, that it might raise costs.
Mm-hmm.
But I'll talk to them. I can talk to them.
So, when you, if the municipality signs on, then we authorize Con Edison to give you our, the usage of their Con Ed customers in our municipality?
Yeah.
Their usage and their account number, or not their names or just their address?
No. Yeah. You get, what we get initially is total consumption, and total consumption during the one hour of peak use, and those are the two components that a, that an energy service company will require to do a bid. And that's basically it.
So, it's aggregate for us?
Yeah.
Just all of Pleasantville?
Yep. All of Pleasantville that's buying bundled.
Right, understood.
Yep.
And then, just walk further a little bit through that process.
Sure.
So, then, say the RFP is accepted and everything's great, you bid that out to as many ESCOs as you can find.
Yep.
You get one that you find to be competitive and reliable and all that sort of stuff, and you make that deal. Then what happens to the data? I'm just very curious about the sharing of the data, personally identifiable information. How is it gonna be secured? How are you guys gonna, I mean, what is...
So, in fact, currently, when you go to an energy service company, that data, which is just KWH and KW and account number, is sent over by Con Ed to the energy service company. And that's exactly the way it's gonna work here. It's sent by Con Ed to the energy service company. If folks want to have enriched services over the course of the contract, they may self-identify to get things like, if we end up doing an energy efficiency fund, they could get access to that, but that's self-identified.
All right. So, it's account numbers essentially, right?
Yeah.
And that's how they know who's who?
Yep.
And then Con Ed collects the money and sends it to them?
Yes.
Is, is it your expectation that you would sign a contract for a fixed price for some time-limited period?
I have a lot of questions to do. What's the length of the first contract?
And then, at the end of that, or at the approaching end of that, Sustainable Westchester would go through the process again of the...
We are permitted to do it for a year, to sign a contract for a year.
Permitted by Albany?
By, yeah, by the Public Service Commission.
Because it's a pilot.
Yeah, it's what they call a demonstration project. In fact, now the Public Service Commission is setting up rules for the whole state to be able to do this. So, they just said yes to us initially, but now they're setting up rules for the entire state. And in fact, our conversations with the utilities have been acting as a kind of, you know, the utilities have certain concerns, they want those concerns addressed, we have certain concerns, we want those concerns addressed, and that actually is informing the Public Service Commission on exactly how to operate this when it is statewide. However, what we intend to do is we're gonna put out bid to the suppliers, and we're gonna ask them to reply in one, two, and three-year duration bids. And it's akin to, right now, it's akin to locking in a mortgage. The opportunity is just so superb right now, and of course...
Because of the low energy rate.
Yeah, because of the, in fact, it's a 13-year low for natural gas, and natural gas dictates the, the price for electricity, because it's roughly 50% of our supply. So, it's a superb opportunity, and so it's our intent to apply to the Public Service Commission for a, you know, if we get a good three-year deal, we want to apply for a three-year deal and ask the Public Service Commission to say yes. And I expect ultimately that the Public Service Commission will say yes.
And then going forward, as the program extends its life, Sustainable Westchester would undertake a similar bid-request process for the next iteration?
Exactly.
Understood.
Exactly. And it's interesting, because in three years, in essence, you have a capped rate, because Con Ed goes down, you can go back to Con Ed, Con Ed doesn't go down. Now, realistically, I don't think people are going to, because if they leave the fixed rate, they, the next time they want to come back in to the aggregator, there may be a different rate, because it's not like that fixed rate is gonna be a toggle-in, toggle-out sort of, sort of circumstance. You, if you walk away, you walk away, and then if you come back a month or two later, if the rates have gone skyrocketing, we're just not gonna be able to keep that same fixed rate. People have to understand that by...
Yeah, you just said that for all the people that are put into the program, let's say we agree to be part of the aggregation, and all those that are now with Con Ed in our village get switched over to the, the ESCO.
Yeah.
And at a fixed rate.
Yeah.
If somebody, an individual chooses to opt out at some point in time during the course of that year, let's say, because Con Ed's rates are down.
Yeah.
When they come back in, the rest of us are still on the fixed rate.
That's right.
So, that person is basically on their own with this ESCO at that point? They're not, they're really part of the...
No, they're not on their own with the ESCO, but at that point, the aggregator is apt to, somebody else has probably taken their position for that fixed rate, and so the aggregator can step in and renegotiate, and we will renegotiate and get the best possible price that we can. It's just that that fixed rate...
For just an individual?
Yeah, it could be 100 individuals.
All right, so a small, a small group of people who are in that position.
Exactly. It is unlikely.
New, new...
If people opt out...
New opt-iners, so let's, whatever, I don't know how to refer to them, people who are opting in at a certain period of time in September of 2015, they may get a different price.
That's absolutely right. If they opt out, they can't, they are not guaranteed that they can get back in at the same price.
Right, because the aggregator, in exchange for a good rate, is defining, will offer that for this group of people. We're not necessarily gonna offer that in six months.
Yeah.
Right.
They bought this hedge.
Right.
And so, if somebody walks out on the hedge, they walk out on the hedge... And so if somebody walks out on the hedge, they walk out on the hedge, they, you know.
Right.
It's otherwise, free enterprise system, people would be-
It could go the other way, it could go down.
Sure. At the end of, at the end of the term, and you're renegotiating with that, either that same ESCO or taking new bids and doing it all over again.
Yes.
Anybody who's in would get the benefit of the new contract.
Exactly, anybody who's in gets the same rate as everybody else who's in.
So, Mike.
Even though they went out and came back in.
Yeah, exactly, there's no, you know, it's not that there's-
It sounds complicated to me in that regard.
There's no, there's no prejudice intended. It's that if somebody walks out, then, then, you know, maybe, in fact, they get a beneficial rate. It's very possible they get a more beneficial rate.
Because these rates are constantly changing.
Yeah.
So, Mike, I know, as you indicated, quite a number of states have been doing this for a long time. I guess Illinois is the big player. And my, I think I read in my wanderings that something like two-thirds of the residential customers in the entire state of Illinois are in community choice aggregation programs.
Yeah.
So-
Two hundred towns and villages are purchasing aggregated roughly, at 2.1 million without Chicago, plus Chicago. And of the 200 towns and villages, all but eight have continued to be engaged in aggregation for a number of years. So eight have opted out, have participated.
And has the experience there indicated that somebody who got in early in the game and stayed in has ended up net better than had they not?
A lot.
And so back, back to that question which you addressed to some degree already, the delta between what ConEd charges and what an ESCO with an aggregate big potential customer base will offer is based on, first off, for the ESCO, zero acquisition cost-
Yeah.
-for these customers, as opposed to having standing, people standing in front of grocery stores.
Yeah.
But also, a big known group of customers for which they then aggressively buy energy, as opposed to ConEd, which is with, with, for perfectly obvious reasons, they're doing what we would all do too, not particularly aggressive, and taking no risks on their energy buys, both because they're limited in some ways regulatory, by regulatory conditions, but also because there's no profit motive.
Yeah.
Have I got that right?
You've got it exactly right. And one of the reasons that, that we're moving fairly aggressively in terms of a timeframe is that if we were to do this today, now historically, the savings for variable rate contracts have been between, have been between 5% and 10%. But if we were to today fix a price, we would have the potential of getting 20% lower than the average rate over the last 12 months.
And, and that's both because of the highly favorable rates right now, and because, I know the village buys its power from NIPA, New York Power Authority, as many governments do, which doesn't sell to residents.
Yep.
And it has been a source of frustration to us that their rates appear so inelastic-
Static.
That rate, you know, the, the raw energy rates in the world markets are crashing, and NIPA's rates aren't going anywhere.
Yeah.
For the same reason, I suppose.
Yeah, well, the, you're, you're exactly right. We, we can only say, we can't promise that this circumstance is going to be in effect for another three, four, six months. We can't promise it, which is one of the reasons that we think it's time-sensitive.
Right. Go ahead.
Sorry. So when you say 15% to 20% lower, lower than what ConEd's, you know, average rate was?
Average over the last 12 months.
Over the last 12 months. Because ConEd, on their website, you know, lays out how a customer can go into an ESCO. And they, they lay out the questions that you should ask the ESCO. And it's a power-your-way program that they have. It's, it's actually very easy. I, I went on, I did it, it's, it's very easy to do. But a lot of what they ask, you know, they, they flag for a consumer is the monthly service charges that ESCOs caught, charge. Are there any other additional charges? Are there any other taxes included and, and all that kind of thing? So that is the type of thing, when you go with an ESCO, will be included in the price that you think you can-
The entire deal, the full ball of wax is included. And we will only, and the, the resolution that towns have been passing is that we will only participate in community choice aggregation if the price is lower than the trailing 12 months, and that's the all-in price, or if there's a guarantee by the supplier that it will always be lower than the utility. We do not think that that's going to be the case, that we're going to get a guarantee by a supplier that it will always be lower than the utility. And the other thing is that there are certain taxes that, that will come off the consumer's bill, certain state taxes that will, so the consumers will also save tax money. And I don't know if you can count that towards the tax cap.
Please. I haven't done that research.
Some of the other questions that are on the ConEd website to ask your ESCO is how the energy supplier handles complaints, what customer service do they have to offer? Pardon me, when are customer service representatives available? These types of things that, you know, for a municipality, you know, we could have residents calling our village administrator and thinking, or us, or us at home, saying, I, you know, I have a problem, I have a complaint, or I have a good thing to say, or whatever.
Yeah.
How, how would-
You'll get calls, you'd send it over to Sustainable Westchester.
Yes.
But you will get calls.
So does that service, that you're going to supply the village of Pleasantville, when you said you're going to try to get a website for every municipality, is that come out of our dues, or is this an additional charge for us?
No, the way we're financing this is that we're going to put, and this also, net of this fee, we're going to put a tenth of a penny. So the Public Service Commission allowed us to put a tenth of a penny on to make sure that the customer service experience is really good. And so we're-
A tenth of a penny on-
Per kilowatt hour.
Per kilowatt hour.
And so that tenth of a penny, so it has to be net lower even considering that tenth of a penny. So it's all in bundled.
So, so the charge for Sustainable Westchester is built into the-
Into the tenth of a penny. Yep.
Well, I don't know what a tenth of a penny is going to mean in kilo, I mean, I don't know what you're talking about.
Yeah.
What does that mean in dollars? If, if you have-
Depends on how many kilowatt hours.
Yeah, right.
Yeah.
If you, if you, if you guesstimate on how many or what you're hoping to find, because you're, you're wanting people to sign on to this so you can get a better price. The more people that sign on, the faster they sign on, or the more municipalities, the better.
Assume it adds up to roughly $8 a year.
Per typical residential customer.
Per typical residential customer.
And that $8 a year per, per residential customer is going to pay for all of this customer service fee?
Yes. And this is based actually on pretty broad experience throughout the United States.
Other states?
Yeah.
Are there more questions from the board?
I have one.
Okay, go ahead.
I have a question.
Sure.
Go for it, Judy.
What happens with, when someone moves, and, and the new, you know, new resident comes in, does that-
Judy, can, well, Mike, if you can repeat the question after you hear it.
Okay, I will.
Does that rate go with the home, or does that new homeowner have to, now renegotiate it?
So if you can repeat the question so people at home can hear it and people in the audience?
Yeah, what happens, does the, with the rate? Does it go with the home, or is it somebody new? So the answer is, the way we will submit it for the RFP is that it will go with the meter itself. So, somebody new resident could still opt out, but it'll go with the meter itself.
I have one last quick one. You're sorry, go ahead. I've asked a couple already.
Yeah, go ahead.
I'll go. So there's this one tenth of one penny that you would like to include, and you said that there's also potentially, so another surcharge of maybe another tenth of a penny or two tenths of a penny, but you have to get permission for that.
Yeah.
Are there any other funding opportunities for Sustainable Westchester? For example, outside agents who are brokering with ESCOs and the ESCOs writing them a check?
Yeah, no, no. That would be an absolute conflict, and we cannot, we can't even take a meal from these guys.
The only, the only funding is this tenth of a penny?
Yeah.
Or if you get a permission from the PSC for an additional surcharge?
Yeah.
What kind of filtering mechanism are you going to do to, to qualify the ESCOs that you're approaching? Can you just talk, I mean, they have to be green, they have to be established?
The key is credit.
Okay.
To have, they actually are putting a good deal of money with the New York Independent System Operator, but to ensure that they have enough money to operate, given their exposure. But we're not going to be qualifying any ESCO just because they have met the credit requirements of the New York Independent System Operator. We're going to have, we're going to have more rigorous credit requirements. And that's the key, that's the key piece. The customer service is another piece, because clearly, they're going to be supporting us in that customer service. But the key thing is credit.
And, and from a power sourcing perspective, in terms of sustainable sources and things like that, does that, is that going to enter into your thinking?
It's, we are apt to create an option for individuals to participate and buy more green. So there are, there are communities that are buying 100% non-carbon energy. But that's not, unless that can be actually lower than the default rate and consistently lower than the default rate.
That would not get the full contract.
Yeah, it's not going to, that's not going to be the default contract.
And will your contract with the ESCO have some sort of mechanism in it in case there is a need to separate from that ESCO for, you know, name the reason? Will you have a way, will you have to then rebid it again? Well, what, how, how will that get handled?
If the ESCO violates that contract in any way, we will have the opportunity to separate from them. And, and I think that we have to hold them fully accountable for that. So when you're looking at somebody like Constellation or ConEdison Solutions, you've got entities that have the heft to be fully responsible, should they, yeah.
Right, and then, I mean, just to follow up on that. So do you envision a situation where the ESCO accepts this contract and puts a bid out that two years from now, because of whatever happens with energy prices, they can't make any money on, and they need to get out of the contract? So do you, I guess what I, what I want to make sure is that we understand how much flexibility exists. Say you did get a three-year deal with ESCO XYZ, that, you know, what kind of flexibility exists?
Yeah, when an ESCO is providing a fixed price, it will have to be fully hedged.
Okay.
They will have to have bought forward for the full three years.
And be able to deliver as-
Yeah, we're not playing Russian roulette with our, appreciate it, but yeah.
But then, again, if it goes south, you can always opt out.
Sure.
Yep.
I mean, which is, one question I had is, you said you can opt out, but is there a limit? How many times you can opt in and out, like over a period of time?
There's, there's no limit. It's just that there's no guarantee on price when you're back in.
You're taking your chances, you opt out, you're taking your chances.
Yep.
All right, any other questions to the board?
No, I'm good.
All right, welcome anybody from the public. If you, ask you to come to the mic so people at home can hear, and give us your name and address, and ask away. Anybody? Mike?
Hi, Michael, Michael Latari, 15 Grant Street. I, for one, urge the board to vote no. I don't really want you involved in my electricity purchases. You can't guarantee me a savings. You can say you're going to save me money. I have chosen to stay with ConEdison. I know I've got ESCOs, but you know what? ConEdison is not making money selling me electricity, or buying electricity and selling it to me. So that's one thing I don't like. I also know nothing about Sustainable Westchester, so I would like a brief description of what you are and what your mission is, and also all of your sources of funding.
Sustainable Westchester?
Yeah.
Okay, cool. So Sustainable Westchester is a 501(c)(3) nonprofit. It is a membership organization which has 42 out of the 45 municipalities are dues-paying members in Westchester County. Our bylaws are on the website, sustainablewestchester.org, so you know exactly how the members can participate. It's a board of directors, which includes six mayors or supervisors and six private sector individuals. The funding for the organization is, we have dues, so the individual municipalities are paying dues, and that's a piece of the funding. We have a small grant from the state agency, NYSERTA. We are doing a solarized program, that small grant, maybe, so our dues are somewhere between $40,000 and $60,000 a year, depending on-
In total revenue?
In total.
So $1,000 per member?
Yeah, $1,000 a member, that's right. And the, we have a grant from the NYSERTA, New York State Energy Research Development Authority, that grant is going to partially fund our executive director. We don't know if that grant is going to be $40,000, $50,000, or $60,000 a year for three years. We have been doing a group buying of solarize in, of solar, in solar communities that will provide at most $25,000 to $50,000. And community choice aggregation will, will fund likely, depending on how many communities actually participate, two to three folks.
So what is your mission?
The mission is, one, to create synergies and to create the opportunity for individual municipalities to buy services more cheaply, more inexpensively through synergies, and to provide shared services and, and sharing of best practices to help develop the private sector green economy, sustainable economy, specifically to create jobs in the, in the county and to, and to reduce greenhouse gas emissions if it is post-effective to do so.
Let me just follow on to that, Mike and Mike. Sustainable Westchester is now the, the new organization that reflects the merger of the Northern Westchester Energy Action Consortium and the Southern Westchester Energy Action Consortium. So NWEAC, which was very active and really groundbreaking operation, thank you, Herbert Ringel and guys like you, Mike, had a membership of pretty much every community, very close to every community in its catchment area. Southern Westchester established a similar thing that was, I think, getting more active as well, although NWEAC had a head start. I've been the liaison to those groups since our membership, and it's, it's a very impressive group. Both the village of Pleasantville and the town of Mount Pleasant are members. And I can report with confidence that I am very impressed by the new board, which, as, as Mike Gordon indicated, includes eight elected officials from all around the county and eight private citizens. But also can report that, you know, there's no, there's no hammer here to force any community to do anything. It's simply an opportunity for all these communities to stand together and try to find ways to address shared problems. One of the things that's on the radar screen, for example, is composting and management of solid waste. You know, that's something down the road that the group will be looking at. So anybody who wants to look can, can go to the website, sustainablewestchester.org, and it's, it's worth a look. Then the other, the other thing, I wonder, Mike, you're probably the, got to respond to someone like Michael Latari, who feels confident today that he wouldn't want to participate. So what would his experience be if we opted in?
He would turn around, he, there's no obligation on his part. Even if the town were to participate, if the municipality were to participate, there's no obligation on your part to actually participate at all. All that you would be do, all that the municipality is doing is, in essence, offering the option for residents to participate. If the municipality doesn't participate, residents won't be allowed to participate. But certainly, you're free to not participate.
By opting out?
He has to opt out by opting in.
Yeah, he would, he would either phone call ConEd, wait time's very short, or he would just take the envelope with a postage paid when it came in and drop it in the mail, and he'd not be participating.
But he would be taken off of the ConEd for a temporary period?
No, no, he'd never be taken off.
So the opt-out period for people who choose not to be involved occurs before the transition?
Yeah.
So, the, the, you know, one of the things that people are concerned about is why is it opt-out, not opt-in? And my understanding of that, again, correct me if I'm wrong, is that when you go to market with an RFP, you need to go to market with an aggregate number of customers. And the opt-in process, based on experience in other states, makes it very, very hard to define that universe of customers. that universe of customers.
But does it give you a false number also, if, if you're going in with?
Yeah, it's not going to be a perfect number, but the, but the ESCOs are going to respond, recognizing that it's not going to be a perfect number, that there are going to be some folks who will, who will opt out. And we currently have the ability here in New York State to opt in, it's just that 75% of the people haven't done it. And the Public Service Commission is concerned over that, because it creates a less vibrant competitive market. So what this does is, it creates a more vibrant competitive market. And as I was saying earlier, I think that people are not opting in for good reason, because individual homes just don't, it's the, the clout of the market, of working with some power in that market, which, which allows us to get these kinds of good rates.
Plus, and I speak for myself, I'm still with Con Ed, simply because, you know, who knows? You know, you get these direct mail pieces, you get phone calls, whatever, who knows if it's the right deal or not? None of us are in a position to assess that, and as you can read on, on the web from some of the horror stories about people whose experience with ESCOs, it's very hard to read the fine print and understand what it all means in such a complex world, so.
Well, the PSC actually has a recommendation of ESCOs, and so does the Con Ed site, that would help residents choose their own supply.
Right, but I mean, one piece of this, and residents obviously will still have that opportunity, one piece of this is that Sustainable Westchester and its specialists introduce a piece of consumer protection that didn't exist before, for people who choose that.
Yep.
Fair to say?
Yeah, absolutely.
What, how's the opt-out rate been in these other states?
Five to 10%. And it's, you know, maybe an ESCO will go in, and if they didn't win the bid, they'll go in and try aggressively to take people, and that's when it ends up at the higher end of the spectrum.
So that might actually have a spillover effect of improving the offers ESCOs make outside the group?
To individuals, very possibly.
That's interesting, yeah.
Yeah.
Because you're fomenting competition.
Yeah.
So any other questions from the audience? Come on up, you just need to come up and identify yourself and.
I'm Bill Stoller, 69 Maple Hill. I just love the fact that Con Ed is called an IOU, just can't get over that. It's called an IOU.
Don't get me started.
No, don't get anyone started. We're talking only about electricity?
Electricity and natural gas.
Because all the conversation has been about delivering electricity and electricity rates, but this would be both?
Yeah, and natural gas, actually, the, sorry, the savings on natural gas may well be better than electricity. That's what we expect, actually.
And it would be this, you would be negotiating with one ESCO for both, or might you be just negotiating with two different ESCOs, one for gas, one for electric?
More likely that we would be negotiating with more than one ESCO. It's unlikely that the same energy service company will win both electricity and natural gas. Who knows?
Which is the next question, so if there's two ESCOs, one gas and one electric, and a homeowner says, "I like the electric deal, I don't like the gas deal," they can opt out of one or the other or both?
Yes.
Okay, that's, that's a good question. And, and, yeah, but I didn't realize that was possible. And let me back up a little to what Steve was asking about green energy here, that, that even though it's called Sustainable Westchester, you're not focusing on this being mostly sustainable or green energy, non-fossil fuel, energy, obviously, gas is fossil fuel, but we're talking about electricity here. About the electricity, you're not focused on making that electricity solely or predominantly from non-fossil fuel sources?
Correct, because the big resistance we're concerned about is the consumers. We need to provide value to the consumers, however.
By value, you mean a lower price?
Yeah, a lower price or a fixed price.
As soon as you start getting all green, it starts going up.
Yeah, however, what a lot of the localities have done is, they've created that green option, and then actively marketed that green option, and encouraged people to do that.
So a green, all right, so let me back you up one second. So a green option would be that this is the price per kilowatt hour for regular supply, mixed non-fossil fuel and fossil fuel?
Yeah.
And if you want a 75% green or 100% green, it's at a higher rate, and who chooses? Municipality chooses they want that, or the individuals choose they, that they want?
The individuals will choose that.
So the individuals, so if I want, if I'm willing to pay another fraction of a cent for each kilowatt hour, because I want total non-fossil fuel generated electricity, I have the option?
Absolutely.
Or I can go for the, hopefully, lower price?
Right.
But with the, with fossil fuels?
Yes.
Okay.
I thought I read that you weren't doing any nuclear energy, is that correct, or?
The, we're not for the regular bid, there's going to be no restrictions on how people respond, at all.
For the regular bid, there'll be no?
No restrictions at all. It'll be the general mix. We are not taking a position for or against nuclear for the regular supply.
So I would just say that my comment to the board is that I'm leaning in favor of this. I don't see the village imposing this as much as facilitating it, but I, I wish it was the other way around. I, I really wish it was an opt-in.
But.
And I understand the reason why it's not an opt-in, but if I, if there could be, if there was a choice.
And be the one you'd rather have.
I'd rather opt in.
Understood.
And I, like you, Peter, have gotten the flyers and the phone calls and looked at it. And like Mindy, have looked at the website and gone, "All these questions, I don't know." It's like, take a bet at a casino, is it going to go up or down? Which, which hand do I play?
Well, and further, a bet at a casino, that you never actually find that if you won, you might get the idea it's not feeling good, but you don't really have benchmarks.
So for me, I'd say, this might be worth it, and then we'll see how it goes, but I just wish it was the other way around.
No, I understand that. So, I mean, what I've said to a couple of people, and now Mike is here, we can confirm if I'm accurately portraying this, if we don't participate, people will have the two options they have now. Stay with Con Ed, if that's where they are, or, or, or switch to an ESCO of their own choosing. If we participate, people then have three options. Stay with Con Ed, choose their own ESCO, or participate in the Sustainable Westchester program. And the only price paid for that, for those who elect not to participate, is to return the postcard or make a phone call to opt out. Fair to say? Is that, have I got that right, Mike?
Yes.
And I'm just going to say, I was going to ask, when we were talking about green, on the gas, we're not taking a position as whether, where the gas comes from?
We don't, we currently have no choice as to where the gas comes from, and.
So fracked or not?
Yeah, and so if somebody is buying gas, it's coming from wherever it's delivered on that pipeline.
So there won't be a green or not-so-green choice on the gas?
Yeah, we won't have a choice on the gas.
There'll be a choice of electricity, but not of the gas?
Yeah.
My questions.
The first option is not really a choice. Your choice is to opt out. You know, your first option is you're in, that you're, you have a choice to opt out.
What I meant, what I meant is, a community member will not have the opportunity to participate in this unless we choose to create it.
Peter, before you go to the audience, can I ask one more question?
Yeah, sure.
Just as sort of a follow-up on that, actually. If a contract runs out and you negotiate with a new ESCO, is there going to be a new public awareness campaign to let people know, "Hey, we're going into a new contract, if you'd like to opt out, opt out now"? Is there going to be, are you going to be, because we're going to do that at the beginning, now, if we, if we choose to participate, we're going to make the community aware that they can opt out.
Mm-hmm.
Are they going to be made aware, again?
Yes.
At the beginning of the next contract?
Yes.
And the next one, and the next one.
Yep.
Other questions from the audience? Come on up.
Fran Von Deesh from Washington Avenue, I've been here since 1976.
Fran, you need me to buy the mic, I'm sorry, so people at home can hear.
Are you in any Westchester communities now?
Yes, the, three Westchester communities have voted to participate with the aggregation. Another 14 have done the first reading. Of those 14, we expect somewhere between 10 and 12 are going to do it, and then we're going to go out en masse as one bid.
Can you take a bill, a typical bill, of someone who's in Con Edison right now, and compare it to those communities?
Oh, okay.
To show, if you, if this person was with Con Ed, their bill would be this?
So we only got permission from the Public Service Commission to do this on February 26th. So since February 26th, three communities have voted to participate. We're going to go out to bid, and the resolution, so we don't know yet.
We don't know yet.
We know how it's working in other states, but the resolution says, we're not going to, even though we, as a municipality, are committed if we save money, or if we get a bid which is fixed and better than the trailing rate has been. So if we end up not getting a good bid, there'll, nothing will happen.
Nothing will happen.
Yeah.
Okay. I had AMBIT for a while, and I got a check one year, for like $135, and then all of a sudden, I saw, I got a big bill, and I called, and they said, "Oh, you had to call every year to stay in," or something, to that effect, and then I went back to Con Edison. So I know what these other companies, you said you don't profit.
Yeah.
Does the municipality profit?
No.
No.
We have, we have no, no stake in the game at all.
Okay, because I know in these other companies?
Right.
The more people they get, they profit from it, with free electricity.
Right.
So the municipality won't get any free?
No.
No.
That's it.
Come on, Mike, what can you do for us?
Thank you.
Thank you, Fran. Other questions here?
Yep.
Good evening, my name is Richard Kane. I live at 77 Leland Avenue, I'm Mindy's neighbor.
And we have your email, thank you very much.
Okay. I guess my first question is, you indicated that more than likely, you would go for a fixed-price option, because it's unlikely that an ESCO will guarantee savings compared to Con Edison's bill for more than one or two months.
Yeah, the, the variable rates, the way they have averaged, is they have averaged between 5 and 10% better, but we would be putting out in the RFP that they would have to guarantee that they're always, every instant, lower than the Con Ed rates. And that, as a private sector energy service company, they're going to say, "Well, out of 12 months, we believe they're going to be lower nine or 10 of those months, we don't know." So we're unlikely to get those kinds of bids that are guaranteed to be lower than the.
I mean, Retail Access has been in place for 15 years, and I'm only aware of one program guaranteed savings for two years, two months. That was the Switch and Save Program on our end.
Well, the.
And that was it, that was it, to get customers to switch.
Yeah, a lot of the suppliers, even in New York, have done what they call indexed rates, where they say, "We'll always be 3% lower than the utility," and then they've signed one- and two-year deals for that.
With commercial customers.
With commercial customers. We have not, we've certainly got the kind of clout to get that kind of a deal, if it is available in the market, but even with that kind of a structure, I think that the credit requirements would have to be even heavier than if, you know, than without that kind of a structure, because they can promise that, and they better be a multi-billion-dollar company, because, to actually be able to, to deliver on it.
Right, and you mentioned that you would be looking for one, two, and possibly three years duration?
Mm-hmm.
And I know in New Jersey, what they do is, they actually have an auction, the EGS auction, they, they bid 1/3 of their load each year, so that way, they take advantage, they kind of average out the swings in the market over time, as opposed to putting everything up right now, fixing the price, and then the price will go up and down.
Yeah.
Did you consider that?
The Con Ed, Con Ed isn't really allowed to fix.
I'm at the ESCOs.
Yeah, I understand, are we going to do one, two, and three years, and do a piece of it? It's.
Pick a piece of it, have a piece of it.
Yeah, yeah, it's, we're being cautious from the get-go, and I think that we're going to consistently be cautious, because we don't want to be in a position where, you know, we made a bad judgment, or the market moved against us, and the benefit that we're providing to consumers just isn't there.
Right.
This is, it's a pretty heavy responsibility to be given the opportunity, as a county, to do this, and then that experience is dictating how the state does it. So we're being more consumer cautious here.
So if you don't get a fixed price that's lower than the trailing 12 months, you're not going to?
We're not going to do it.
Okay. And then with your energy surcharge, you're aware that the SBC fund collects about $200 million a year?
Yeah, the SBC fund will still be in place, so you'll still be, that's part of everybody's bill, they're paying the SBC. So you'll still have the additional ability to get the incentives from NYSERTA, so that'll still be in place, but the individual, so that, as an example, the Energy Improvement Corporation is financing energy efficiency over and above what NYSERTA is doing, giving low-interest financing. There may well be some services that we can provide that NYSERTA cannot, that are an add-on to what it is NYSERTA is doing. But remember, we're going to have to come back for approval for that, again, not just to the Public Service Commission, but that's going to be a collective decision of the municipalities.
But again, you know, customers are paying $200 million a year already, and I guess it, it kind of galls me that we should now spend additional money for additional energy conservation programs that you want to propose.
You will have the opportunity.
I would think it all she, within the same blanket, there's plenty of funding.
Yeah, you'll have the opportunity to say no if you don't want it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Well, if I understood that right, you'd have to say, "Yes, I want it," right?
Yes.
It's not going to be one of those, like, the whole construct is to say no if you don't want it, the energy surcharge, the green surcharge would be, "Yes, I want that."
Exactly, exactly.
And just because I didn't understand it, what is SBC?
Systems Benefit Charge.
We're in a storm of acridism.
Yeah.
All right.
Yeah. Yeah, and as an example, for resilience purposes, we now have microgrid funding available statewide, and, and NYSERTA is considering the fact that we are passing community choice aggregation to be a positive in terms of our getting money for microgrids. So these are, the fact that we're participating in this engagement, in this aggregation piece, is bringing us to a different level, and we will actually get more NYSERTA funding than we otherwise would get, because we have this kind of awareness.
Welcome.
Kevin Farley, 113 Solz Lane. I had two questions regarding the, the switching periods that came up, and after you go through the initial option to opt out, if I did end up going to the ESCO then, it wasn't clear, would I have to stay with the ESCO a certain period of time? And then if I did decide to switch back to Con Ed, I thought I saw something on the website, that if I did switch back after going to the ESCO, that I would have to stay back with, stay with Con Ed for a year?
Yeah.
Could you clarify that?
Yeah, yeah. That's probably my misarticulation. No, you do not have to stay with Con Ed if you switch back to Con Ed, however, you just, I just, we just can't guarantee that you can get the same price, that's all.
When you come back.
When you come back.
Does, does Con Ed have a requirement, that if I switch back to them, I have to stay with them?
No.
Because I believe I read that on the website.
No.
Okay. Second thing is related to the switching. Would Sustainable Westchester decide, could they decide to switch us back to Con Ed? Or once we're with an ESCO, we have to stay with it as, as a community?
It's, there have been circumstances where community choice aggregators have seen that the utility rate is better, and they have actually switched people back to that default rate, until they could get a better contract. But it's not likely, but there have been cases that that's happened.
But you're able to do it?
Yes, absolutely.
So, correct me if I'm wrong, Mike, but Kevin, I think the, the point there is, the, the community, this board, for example, needs to vote about whether to participate in this. If we vote to participate, every homeowner is free to do whatever they want with that. They can opt out and stay with Con Ed, and they can switch back and forth however they wish in the future. Any decisions this board might be involved in, as Mike described, would only be decisions that would affect. that would affect the people who remained with the Sustainable Westchester program, and you would still have the right to leave at any point in the future if you elected to.
Yeah, actually, my point was the Sustainable Westchester.
Could they pull out?
Have the option of switching everyone back to ConEd.
Right, and the answer, it's just like another contract change, right, Mike?
Yeah.
Unlikely to happen, but it could.
And you'd only do it if it was a better rate in the first place, so it would only be a win for everybody if that did happen. Lo and behold, ConEd decides they want to compete.
And that sort of, that sort of gets at the piece...
Yeah, everybody, now, now we can make up.
That sort of gets at the piece, the sort of consumer protection piece, which is that, you know, all of us have been stuck with, you know, should we choose this XYZ ESCO, and who knows whether it was a good idea, and, and there certainly isn't anybody between us and that ESCO looking out for our interests, as opposed to this scenario where Sustainable Westchester is constantly monitoring this and is looking out for the interests of this aggregate pool of people.
And some of those time limits you were talking about, I had read, in some of the ESCOs that people go out and do on a consumer level, there were some restrictions. So what you referenced, I don't think is about this sustainable ESCO, it's about an ESCO that I or you might go out and get individually. ConEd had some...
You were talking about ConEd.
No, I know, but I'm saying...
To ConEd.
But not coming in and out of this ESCO, it was coming in and out of, it's one that you and I would do individually as a consumer.
No, I was referring to, oh, yeah, going in and out of ConEd if I opted.
No, I know, that's what I'm saying.
You guys are saying the same thing.
There were, there are restrictions on ConEd for ESCOs that are not part of sustainable, not for ours.
You may both be saying the same thing, actually. So it's possible that what you're reading on ConEd's site is them saying, let the buyer beware, there may be exit fees for you if you are with a private energy service company.
But we would not be part of that.
Yeah, no, so, and that's absolutely appropriate for ConEd to say, be careful, you could have an exit fee if you go private.
I believe it was a ConEd fee, but that's okay. And that brings me to my last question, is all the data that I've seen presented on savings through ESCOs have all been, or it seems that they've been for periods where energy prices are going down, and I was wondering, do you have any data that shows us how ESCOs perform when energy prices are rising?
In, in rising and falling markets, the average has been pretty consistent between 5% and 8% savings. We had a short spell in Illinois when it was 25%, and that was in fact because prices were falling. But, but generally, when prices are rising, or stable, or falling, it's been roughly 5% to 8%. The fixed price is a different thing, it is in fact a hedging, not a, you know, not a trying to beat the market, it's like fixing your mortgage rate, you know, saying we're going to fix it at a specific time.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you.
Just to clarify, though, that's on your energy supply?
Yes.
So your bill would only go down by about half of that? Of course, you're still paying for it.
Distribution, which is where you pay all your minor...
Yeah, a little more than half, ConEd's between 30% and 40%. So, but you're, you're right, it is specifically on the energy supply, it's important to know. Yeah.
You know, in the PowerPoint presentation, and I had sat through the webinar that you did in March, there is something, it's, you state that if the total price is still lower than the utilities, the CCA can include a bill surcharge that will accumulate dollars for an energy efficiency fund that can distribute incentives for energy efficiency upgrades, even smart thermostats. I think you clarified in that presentation that you first concentrate on delivering the dollar, the savings first, and that this surcharge could possibly be added down the road.
Yeah, and we actually did not get permission from the Public Service Commission to do that surcharge, and so we are going to consult, not just with the Public Service Commission, but with the individual municipalities on that, so we're not, we don't, we have no permission to do that.
Any other questions? Give us your name and address.
Yeah. You call security, please.
Jonathan Cunningham, 14 Tyler Lake.
Now we know where we live.
Yeah, exactly. Mike, I am not used to anybody giving me a free option, so I was curious if you could better explain the fact that I get to opt out at any time, the ESCO's going to go in and buy three years' worth of energy hedged, so they're putting out a financial commitment upfront, and yet I get to opt out and leave them hanging with their financial commitment, and what does that do to their credit and the ability for the rest of the group to rely on them to be around?
Yeah, it absolutely, the impact is that you created, we've created a free option.
Right.
We do expect, so what the ESCOs have been saying to us is that they don't expect a lot of people will be doing that, but I'm absolutely certain that the fixed price that we would get if we were being more aggressive and saying you can't opt out would be slightly lower than the fixed price that we would get that, you know, with this kind of free, free come and go option. So we do, it isn't free quite, but we're still not going to be doing that fixed rate unless it is net, that fixed rate is lower than the trailing, the trailing 12 months.
Yeah, I just, I'm just curious if, if, I don't want to go into, it gets too complicated, but if people actually committed to not opting out, the, the rate you can secure would probably be even significantly lower.
A little bit lower.
Just a little?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. The other thing that I wanted just to say, because I've been part of this a little bit, and God forbid I can't come to this room and not give an opinion.
Up until last week, Jonathan was sitting here and has now retired after 12 years.
So, just some numbers, I, I mean, I don't know what it is, but just extrapolating off my bill, I, I would guess the average utility bill all in is between $300 and $500 a month. Is that, is it lower than that? Will you, how much, how much?
We don't know.
I'm, I'm gas, I'm saying gas and electric.
Yeah, that's why most people are just electric.
Okay. But what, call it 400 bucks, it may be less, maybe more.
Whatever.
Mine's more.
Okay.
Full disclosure. So that's, at 5%, that's about $240 a year of savings.
No, the 5% is off.
I'm not, just let me finish, I'm not done. So quickly, you guys are so aggressive with us on this side of the table.
You're not taking it off the right thing.
I'm going to.
All right, come on, get some...
Or $960 a year at 20%, and then backing out the service delivery, you're roughly around $150 to $500 a year in savings.
Got it.
I, I know there's been a great deal of focus on the opt-in, opt-out. I, I kind of think, though, from your perspective, and from mine too, that that is really kind of confusing the focus on what should be really the basic consideration here, and that is, done correctly, if this group can deliver the savings that they say they can deliver, and they won't do it if they can, it sounds like, it's this all about lowering people's utility bills. I mean, it's, it's a, it's a generic gas and electric, and, you know, the, the two rules are, if you're buying a commodity, you want it delivered when you need it, and you want to pay the lowest possible price possible. Those are the two real growth guide rules of, of a, of a commodity. I've been on this board, we've argued, debated for hours about lowering or increasing parking, community parking rates by $50 a year, a dollar a week. I've been a liaison to the farmer's market, and I've sat there and heard how there are kids who can't afford lunch. So there, the idea of, of, you know, not saving, not, not providing the community this savings, when the only cost actually that we're asking the community to do is to make a phone call to opt out if they don't want to. I, I don't think that's a very high cost to give a lot of the community that can actually use somewhere between $50, or $150, or $500 a year in savings, that opportunity, and I don't quite frankly think that the neighbors, our neighbors would say, that's a big cost either. Yeah, maybe it's a little annoying, but what the heck, I'll make the call so that my neighbor who could actually use it can do it. So I, I think this opt-in and opt-out, we're not binding anybody to it, we're just saying, hey, guys, if you don't want to do it, please make a call on my behalf, because I could use the savings. And so I would, I would urge you to, to keep that perspective in mind in making your decision, because it's not about opting in and opting out, it's about really delivering a utility savings on a commodity to the, to the village, and very much so, you know, village, I know very, we're going to hear from Patty, that we, we try, you try, every day, very hard to make affordable, and this seems like an easy way to do it, when all you do to ask people who don't want to do it is to make a phone call, I'm out. Fine, we get it, no problem. So that's what I urge you to do.
Thank you, Jonathan.
Thanks, Jonathan.
So if opt-in and opt-out isn't such a big deal, why can't we do it opt-in?
You can currently do it opt-in.
Right.
There's nothing restricting...
I mean, that would be such a difference, because people will feel like they have more of it.
No, it is, it is a big deal, because you won't get any savings with opt-in.
Well, you'll have a better idea of what numbers you're looking at, too.
We could still, do, right now, the law allows us to do opt-in. 75% of the people don't do it, and there's a lot of sales costs in doing that, so, so, you know, there's no reason for us to pursue it if it's opt-in, because we already have it.
Because you don't want to spend the sales cost, that's why. You don't want to...
That'll, that'll cost people money on their bill.
But I think the ESCOs are spending their sales costs now, so that money's already being invested.
I think either way, opt-in or opt-out, you need to educate the people of what's going on.
Yeah.
And it's our, it's our duty to do that, and it's your duty to do that, so if you're doing it, give the people a choice. People like, you know, we, we...
Well, people, this is an additional choice, so people have their choice, and this creates an additional choice, and you're absolutely right, we will need to all educate.
Right, so, you know, we sat here years ago, eight years ago, negotiating a cable provider. We only had one cable provider in, in the village, and that was Cablevision, and we negotiated a franchise. Joe, you're last year on the board, and, you know, the whole time, and it was, it was a brutal process for us, it was a, it was an education process, it was an education process for residents, because all they knew is that they wanted another provider, they wanted a choice. So that was the only thing in my mind, is that we were negotiating with one thing in mind, is to give our residents a choice, because they have the ability to now say, you know what, Cablevision, I don't want you anymore, I want Verizon, or Verizon, I don't want you, I want Cablevision, and that, that means a lot to residents, that means a lot, they're in control of what is their household.
Yep, absolutely. And you're free to actually choose to vote no and not give the residents this choice, and that's totally up to you, it's your flexibility.
I'm just saying, I would be a, a, you know, I know Jonathan said it's not a big deal if it's opt-in or opt-out, I totally disagree, I think it's a very big deal, and if we have the opportunity to do it, you know, you can create quite a, a following of, of encouraging and, and educating and saying, hey, you know, if this is so great, you know, I'm confident that you're going to opt in, you know, if this is such an advantage, then why not have people be able to opt in? That's just my point of view, my opinion.
Helen, you want to say something?
Helen Murow, 3 Haythill Road. A couple of things, one is, I think it's wonderful that some people have gone ahead and educated themselves and done due diligence on this whole serving energy to any community, it's a huge job, I really appreciate that, I'm a big fan of Sustainable Westchester, and I was and am on various committees there, transportation, solid waste. It's a great way to aggregate, aggregate all sorts of helpful things, the original one I was involved with was Energize New York, which is to do with getting audits of people's homes at very low or no cost, and then helping them insulate or exchange their boilers and furnaces for more efficient ones. So I do believe it should be an opt-out process, because having worked in many volunteer groups, it is almost impossible to get people to sign up. Pleasantville Recycles is a very wonderful educational group, but getting somebody to come to the website is like pulling teeth, asking them to join the email list is so difficult, yes, I'll do it, yes, I'll do it, they just don't. It's very hard to get people to opt in, I think opting out is a much more sensible approach. Also, there's an Earth Day event coming up at the Pleasantville Middle School on Tuesday, April 28th, in the evening, 5:30 till 7:30, be quite a few people represented, but one of the things that we're going to either raffle or silent auction off is a Nest thermometer, a thermostat, which is a self-learning tool for your home to better run your energy needs, so I think that segues into this.
Thank you. Was there someone else there?
Yep.
Ashleyland Avenue.
Really?
I just wanted to maybe expand a little bit on what Mindy was saying. I happen to agree that I think it should be an individual resident's right to have the option upfront, whether or not to opt into the program. I thought maybe it might help if the board were to send out an informative mailing about what's going on, the specifics as best as you can give them, about what's involved, and also maybe a questionnaire or a survey to get an honest feedback from those who will reply and give you a better idea of actually, a more realistic idea of how many people would not only opt in but stay in, rather than doing it the other way around, and having everyone without a choice opting in or being put in, and then having to opt out. This way you have a more realistic figure as, going in as to what the numbers would be, will they be accurate and exact? No, but they would be, I think, more realistic as to what might happen. So I would ask, if possible, that the board send out a mailing beforehand, because the way I had understood it and read in the article, you were going to vote on it, make a decision. If you decided to go with it, then there would be the searching and the contract signed, and then a letter was going out, and I think it should be the other way around, just as a resident, speaking for myself and maybe other people who would like to know and make an informative decision, you know, an educated decision on my own. I don't know if you have the choice, I'm a little confused as to whether you have the choice to vote in, and then also vote how that works, whether there's an option in or not. I, I would prefer to see it where the option remains with the resident or the homeowner upfront, that's...
Okay, thanks.
Okay.
Anybody else?
Should I, there's just one piece of clarification.
Go ahead, yeah.
Which is that there will be two points of communication. There's the point of communication that the general piece is moving forward, and then there's the point of communication when the specifics are available, just...
One more questionnaire?
Mike Garfield, Ashland Avenue, sent the pretty one up first. I have one question and one question. Whoever, whatever ESCO you select, if we should do this, free gas and electric, is there any way I can lose my gas and electric? It's a separate question.
No.
So ConEd is going to...
Yes.
Okay, no matter what happens.
Yes.
Okay. That's all I have.
One more question, I'm sorry.
Meaning, meaning just...
Mr. Garfield, how are you?
All right. It's a tag team.
Mike, meaning that ConEd will always take somebody back if they want to go back?
Yes.
No, no, no. It means when the lights go on and I hit the switch.
You mean a disruption in service, right?
You will always have power.
Yeah.
Right, you will always have power.
You will always have power.
Yes.
Yeah.
This is just something I thought of, and it's really maybe out in left field, but if there's a power outage, or a gas explosion, something serious, a transformer blows and arcs into the houses and appliances are lost, whatever, are we exposing ourselves as a village to additional liability in that regard?
No, I mean, i- if that were to happen, it's ConEd's equipment that would have blown up. ConEd is responsible for delivery and service. We have hurricanes, right, we have hurricane Sandy, right.
Sounds like the ESCO...
That part of your bill is usually the most expensive part, that distribution, and that stays the same, unfortunately.
Well, it's 30 to 40% of your bill, according to Mike.
So then the savings, you had mentioned initially 5% or 10% savings, give or take, that's on the usage, not on any other part?
That's right, so the... Go up here.
I'm going to sit down.
Oh, you can come back up.
No, no, I think I'm done.
Okay. So, so the, the 5% to 10% is the average nationally for variable rate contracts entered in by community choice aggregators. The, we may well get a fixed price, which ends up being a heck of a lot better than that. I'm actually getting some indication, some shocking indications on the kinds of prices... I'm actually getting some indication, some shocking indications on the kinds of prices. I, you know, I'll believe it when I see it in paper with a commitment with a credit-worthy counterparty, but anyway.
All right. I think we've --
The sales job starts to get going up.
Mike, you had said the three municipalities, was Lewisboro, and what were the other two?
Lewisboro, Somers, and Croton. Another ten have had the first reading, and a number of them, we expect, I think, ten to fourteen have had the first reading, and generally, it's taking two readings for folks to pass it. And I expect --
What does that mean, the first reading? What are the readings?
Meaning, I mean, this is a first reading, basically, tonight.
Then they debate it again.
Exactly. Exactly. And most of those communities are going to do it.
One more question, Richard? And then, I'm sure all of you are here to see our budget presentation. I invite you to stay. Patty is a thrilling speaker, and she has multimedia.
Now, you need to put a comment that the actual experience with ESCOs, residential customers, there's actually more leaving ESCOs, going back to ConEd than are going from ConEd to ESCOs. That trend has been going on the last three years, and aside from this, is expected to continue. Residential customers have not been happy with their ESCOs.
And your analysis of, what is your analysis of why that is?
I don't know. But I'm just, they're not satisfied with this. And basically, the ESCOs aren't really providing a service, but they are providing for the energy.
I have a suspicion why it is.
I don't know.
Here's my suspicion. It's only Joe Stargiotti's suspicion. Because they promise you one thing and they give you something else.
Yeah, but it's, you know, you know.
Now, I don't know how that's going to impact this.
I don't know how it's going to play out. That has been the trend.
Is that one of the reasons why the PSC is endorsing this whole thing as a test?
Yes. Yeah. The, what has happened, you are exactly right, and you are exactly right. What has happened is that a lot of these ESCOs are giving teaser rates. You know, they promise you, you know, you're going to be X, Y, Z below, and then a couple of months later, you find that you're six cents higher. So that's the reason that a lot of people have reasonably been leaving the ESCOs.
And this concept introduces savvy players from Sustainable Westchester, providing that consumer protection piece that none of us have on our own.
Yeah. And we will not sign a contract unless one of two things is true. One, we're getting a guarantee from a credit-worthy counterparty that the price will always be below the utility rate. Or, two, we're getting a fixed rate which is better than the trailing twelve months.
All right. Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mike Gordon. All right, well done. Thank you, Glenn, for coming. Thanks.
You did a magnificent job.
Thanks, too.
You really did. You took what's very complicated and really presented very eloquently. I thank you. I mean that.
And let me also say thanks to Sustainable Westchester and all of those folks really doing, even far beyond all of this. It's such an exciting time, so.
Yeah, thanks also for the red questions. If you guys don't really consider it, and, you know, if I were to come in offering a hundred-dollar Corvette, you guys would rightly be kicking the tires and very much appreciate it.
All right. Next time, bring the hundred-dollar Corvette.
Yeah, I was just going to say, if we wouldn't kick that one, I'd start.
Thank you all, much appreciated. Of course, anyone who's watching is, we encourage you to let us know how you're feeling about all this. Any one of us are up for grabs, the folks at Village Hall. My email contact is on the website, pleasantville-ny.gov. We'll be continuing to consider this, and I think bringing it to a resolution at one or another of the next couple of meetings, because there is some time sensitivity to it, as Mike indicated. So happy to get all feedback and look forward to it. So with that, we segue to the next item on our agenda. All right. Our TV guy has to change his DVD. Five-minute break, we will be right back to you. We had a minute to switch the DVD that records all this. As mentioned, when we closed the discussion about community aggregation of energy, we now morph to the discussion of our tentative budget. Is there a motion to open the public hearing on the fiscal year 2015-16 tentative budget?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Take it away, Patty Dwyer, the village administrator. Is the animated gif of the swimmer in?
You betcha, Mr. Mayor. Would not disappoint you.
Thank you.
This is a classic, high-level executive summary for the Board of Trustees. So first of all, no, take your time getting organized there. Mr. Mayor, members of the board, I am pleased to present to you the tentative budget for fiscal year beginning June 1, 2015, and ending May 31, 2016. Before I start, I just really want to recognize the hard work that was put into this budget by our esteemed Finance Department. I have with me tonight our village treasurer, Mary Schwartz, and our deputy treasurer, Noreen Regan. I consider them the Department of Factual Verification. So if I run into any questions that I'm not able to answer on the fly, we certainly will have answers for you. What I'd like to do tonight is give you a very high-level executive summary. As you know, this budget is complex. It has several funds. I did post the budget online, so there's line item detail for the general public for informational purposes. There are also a number of components to the budget, such as wage schedules, debt service schedules, all kinds of backend information that budget wanks find very interesting, and I'm happy to share that. But tonight, it's important just to, again, give a high-level executive summary, so you know what we're talking about in terms of dollars and cents, and you get some perspective on what we've been confronting operationally in terms of costs and our local economic condition. Some budget basics, I think it's, these are table-setting things that you're all familiar with, but the public may not understand why we do things in this particular cycle. But our fiscal year starts on June 1 and ends on May 31. That is set by village law. We have a taxable status date of January 1, meaning that on that date, any assessed valuations for all the real property, all the real properties that are assessable begin to be recorded. And after the 1st of January, the assessor is compelled to present a tentative assessment role by February 1. As you know, our budget is predominantly based on property tax revenue, so our fiscal cycle and this assessment cycle kind of coincides with each other in order to produce this June 1 fiscal year. After the tentative assessment role is proposed, I have to produce a tentative budget on or before the 20th of March. During that time, there are grievance nights held with the board, there are small claims, settlements, and the like, some adjustments. A final assessment role is produced on the 1st of April, and then we are cycling into our hearing on this tentative budget, which is obviously important because the tax levy that this budget depends upon is levied upon that assessment role. Finally, the board has to, by the 1st of May, adopt a budget for the subsequent fiscal year. Failure to enact a budget just results in the existing budget that's been filed as tentative becoming the de facto budget. And in accordance with village law, after the board adopts a budget, there's a warrant issued to the treasurer to levy taxes, and those taxes are levied here on the 1st of June, and as all of you know, then paid in two equal installments. We also are under new legislative acts that were passed by the state legislature in 2014. Another chapter was added to the real property tax law, compelling all municipalities and school districts to comply with a real property tax freeze with certain opt-out provisions. Just to go over the tax cap briefly, it is a two-year tax freeze program. In order to participate in this program, which will result in certain credits and refunds to resident taxpayers, the municipality, in our instance, this village, must adopt in this fiscal year a budget that stays within the tax cap limit. And that limit is set by a very complicated formula. We also must present to the Office of the State Comptroller and Efficiency Plan that I am responsible for certifying, and that plan has to be presented no later than June 21. That plan will state that the village anticipates saving at least one percent in terms of tax dollars, that we anticipate saving a one percent tax savings in our subsequent fiscal years 2017, 18, and 19 by measures we are putting in place now or have put in place since the year 2012. Very complicated, there's a look back on this, but I can assure you that we are going to be able to produce that efficiency plan. We've done a lot collectively and collaboratively with our departments and with our community to make sure that we have had very responsible spending plans over the last few years. I'm also confident that the budget that's going to be adopted for fiscal year 16 that we're discussing tonight will remain within the tax cap limits that are set for this coming year. So this two-pronged test, in order for us to compete in this program for tax cap credits for our residents, we've been successful in meeting both of those two-pronged tests. We'll have a tax-compliant budget, and we'll have an efficiency plan. Okay, so getting into what we're looking at tonight, we, again, are subject to fund accounting, meaning that we segregate our appropriations and our revenues in certain funds based upon the activities that we are, that we're providing in terms of services. The General Fund is our largest fund. It supports the majority of the public services that are offered to village residents. In this current proposed budget, spending is going to increase about 6.2 percent. The appropriations plan calls for $14,669,933. In order to meet that budget, we are looking at a tax levy of $10,285,650. We're looking at other revenues to support the budget of $3,859,283. And we're looking to use our fund balance in the amount of $525,000 to balance the budget. Based upon the results of small claims review and the final assessment role, we're looking at a taxable assessed valuation of $113,95,417. This, of course, is the base upon which we would levy that $10.2 million tax levy. This results in a tax rate $90.85, or an increase of 1.59 percent over the previous fiscal year. Lots of math, but this is really the heart of the budget. The appropriations plan can be presented in several ways. I'm going to illustrate it for the sake of illustration in pie charts right now, but the categories of expense that the General Fund supports range from general governmental support, public safety, public works, recreation and library, senior outreach services, community services, employee benefits, retirement systems contributions, as well as debt service and capital transfers. And this pie essentially is representing the percent of each of these categories of expense on the whole budget. Not surprising, a village of our size. And, let me just go back here. I thought I would have an arrow to point to here, but I don't. Our budget has been broken up into these categories of expense historically, and I think the level of support has been pretty consistent over the years for each category of expense. This is actually moving on here. With respect to revenues, because we are a village, we have limited tax capacity. Our taxing capacity is primarily property tax. We do not impose a sales tax. We don't propose any excise taxes. We do not have any ad valorem's. So the budget is heavily dependent on property tax revenue. You can see, to the extent of our budget, it's 72 percent of our revenues to support that $14.6 million budget. We do have departmental revenue that comes in for fees and charges and the like. We also have non-property taxes that come in. That is predominantly a sales tax-sharing agreement through Westchester County with other municipalities and the school district. There's a little over a million dollars coming from that one particular source. There is also some money that comes to the village from utility companies that are able to conduct business by using our public rights of way, and there are taxes that are imposed upon them for that opportunity. The budget is going to rely on some fund balance. That slice of the pie here in red shows what would consider to be the deficit between the appropriations and the revenues that have to be made up with cash reserves. Looking at those categories of expenses in the General Fund, again, this is another way to present exactly what each category of expense consists of in terms of appropriations and items and objects of expense. The general government support budget is over $1.6 million, supports the executive board, as well as the justice court, all the administrative functions in my office, in the clerk's office, in finance, our retained services, such as our auditing expenses, our legal expenses for outside counsel, anything like professional engineers we may retain as well, our information technology budgets, the budget for Village Hall and all of the expenses to operate this building, our overhead and insurance for the entire General Fund service class of operations. That would be general liability insurance, everything from automobile and excess coverages as well. Also, in this category, we budget for small claims and tax subsidiary refunds that we know are due in the upcoming year, and we also have a contingent account that we set aside funds for unforeseen emergencies during the year. Another significant category of appropriations for the General Fund is public safety. This is not only the police budget, but it's also buildings and codes that get categorized in this particular class of expense. The budget is broken up into building code enforcement, police admin, patrol division costs, crossing guards, detectives and juvenile divisions, as well as parking enforcement. It's about a $3.4 million expense for personnel, departmental resources, and other supplies and operating costs. Public Works, another major component of the General Fund budget. Here, we are very visible in terms of what we do with the financial resources that are necessary to operate the Public Works Department, everything from road maintenance to snow removal, streets and traffic lights, sanitary sewers, leaf collection, parks maintenance, buildings and grounds. The proposed budget for the Public Works Department is in excess of $2 million. Another small component in this General Fund is outreach services. Most of these services are provided down at the Clinton Street Center. Outreach and support, as well as transportation and activities for adults and retirees and seniors that want to use those services are available down at Clinton Street. We still run a very valuable nutrition program, as well as several different social activities down at the center. The budget that is necessary to support those operations is about $453,000. The budget that is necessary to support those operations is about $453,000. Recreation, oh, it works good, my little GIF works. This particular component of the budget also has to account for the village's obligations in its inter-municipal agreement with Mount Pleasant to support the joint library system. So approximately 57% of this $1.6 million budget is a library share, a little over $800,000 for library services. But the recreation department does provide, in addition to general administrative services, a host of youth programs and adult programs, as well as special events for the village. Community services is an area of expense and obligation where we support the workings of a lot of our volunteer boards, as well as such things as the farmer's market, the beautification committee, and our contracts with PCTV. This section of the budget is about $339,000. And two more components, these are essentially back-of-the-book type of expenses that don't get distributed to each particular department but end up lumped in the back of the budget as just gross expenses for all of these services in the general fund, all of the payroll, all of the paid services in the general fund. Employee benefits are everything from pension contributions that are required to be made to social security, payments, Medicare, workers' comp, unemployment, and health insurance, always a very large component of the budget because we are essentially a service provider as a municipality and we are very labor intensive and we are looking at $3.6 million now in benefit contributions. There's been lots of discussion over the years about the obligations that municipalities have toward payment into the New York State retirement system. You could see some relief this year, for the first time in several years, the payments are estimated to be lower, in the aggregate about 3% from last year, and this is for both systems, the employees' retirement system as well as the police and fire retirement system. We are hoping that the state's numbers are fairly accurate. You could see here again, a very slight decrease in contributions to the police and fire retirement system, at least we're hoping it trends in this direction for several years to come. What is more illuminating is to see the changes over time in what we have had to deal with in terms of being able to absorb that impact on essentially a flat budget under tax cap constraints. I think the staff had recognized these obligations and these really critical management issues in terms of our ability to operate with very constrained resources and have done a fantastic job in helping me put together some very responsible budgets over the last five years that have addressed these dramatic impacts. Finally, debt service and transfers, this is another category of expense in all of our funds, but in particular, the general fund, it's used to set aside funds that are due to pay down debt that we have incurred by financing large capital projects or large pieces of capital equipment. I could report tonight that, as the board knows, we had recently gone out to refund bonds that were issued several years ago, almost like going back to refinance a mortgage, we went back to the market to get better interest rates and to take advantage of the interest rate environments that are out there. And just last week, we were successful in reducing some of our aggregate debt service payments by close to $400,000. So we're delighted with those results, we'll be seeing that impact future years when we're paying principal and interest payments. It's somewhere between $35,000 and $45,000 a year in savings. So all of those things will help our long-term outlook. To support this budget, this $14.6 million spending plan, our sources of revenue, as I said, are very few, property taxes being the predominant source of revenue, other taxes representing just under 10%, fees and charges from departments about 12%, and we are not, as other districts may be, dependent on state aid. Fortunately, we are looking at less than 1% of an impact on our budget from those sources. Our own cash reserves are going to account for about 4% and 2% will come from inter-fund transfers from other funds. The second fund that the village has established is a refuse fund. It solely provides residential sanitation services. There's approximately 2,343 collection units, which means basically dwelling units where we collect our trash. This budget is going to see a slight increase in the rate for collections. It will probably result in under a $10 charge, under $10 of an increase in 12 months service. Here's our schedule, current rate for single families is $441.14, it's proposed to go to $450.33. The other rates are multipliers of the single-family rate, condos pay 75%, a two-family residence pays 1.5% of that rate, and a three-family is a two times multiplier, I should say. So those are the rates that we propose to be in effect. Because the refuse district is funded through tax dollars as well, it also is subject to the tax cap. In the aggregate, both the general fund and the refuse fund, tax caps are compliant with the laws that are in effect for the tax cap freeze program. The water fund is the fund where we provide the revenue for the distribution and purification of drinking water. We have a $3.8 million operation. This involves not only bringing potable water from a facility we jointly own with the town of Newcastle up in Millwood, but also maintains our distribution system and the debt service on all of the infrastructure that we've been working on over the years. Last year, we added a chlorination system to the process and we are, at this point, not only in compliance, but we've exceeded all of the guidelines that are established by the Department of Health and the EPA for safe water drinking standards. So it's a very expensive process to deliver filtered water, but it is also very necessary to do that for all the right reasons with respect to public health and safety. Our water rate structure essentially is tiered, there's a resident rate for people living within the village, there are non-resident district and out-of-district rates for sales that occur outside of the village, and then there's a bulk rate that's been established for Pace University. We don't propose at this time to raise any of these rates, we believe the fund is performing well, even though, as you know, the revenues are very elastic for this fund and anything such as a drought or other types of measures could cause us to look at this a little more critically during the year, but we believe right now we're in a pretty good place with the financial condition of that fund. We also established a very small pool fund just to cover the cost of operations and maintenance of the swimming pool, and the proposed budget for this fund is a little over $314,000. There are new attributes at the pool that I think people will really be excited to see this year, that's been under renovation. There will be an unveiling, so to speak, very shortly. There are also new components to the programs that the recreation offers for the pool, in particular, a fitness swim for adults and a program called Water Babies for babies and tots, and we encourage you to take a look at the recreation brochure for those opportunities that'll be coming up this spring and summer. These rates that are in effect are rates by 5/31, if people buy their permits by Memorial Day, they are discounted after the, after 5/31, they actually escalate a little bit. Finally, the budget is supported with a capital plan. In this current fiscal year, we're looking at working on some road reconstruction in the vicinity of Skytop Drive and some of the streets up in the hills in that area because we are going to be coordinating with Con Ed on a project. We intend to fund our half of that work with the Capital Highway Improvement Fund money or CHIPS money from the state of New York. I'm also proposing to continue sidewalk rehabilitation and reconstruction on a 50-50 basis in the residential areas. I'm looking for a $50,000 transfer to capital, which I've appropriated in this budget. With respect to civic spaces, a couple of things are coming to light, we are looking at some new street containers for recycling on-street, and we're looking at providing for the immunimeters in the municipal parking lots in order to better service long-term With respect to public works equipment, there is a request for another large dump truck, and that particular piece of equipment is going to cost about $210,000. That is the only element of this capital plan where we have to still discuss the method of funding. What we were talking about is building in contributions in the general fund as transfers to capital in order to pay down a short-term note. I think that we're going to be able to do that without having an impact on this budget. The other items here, with respect to parking management systems, that would be the immunimeters and then Parkway Field. We are in the process of planning for public restrooms, at least on, it's something we anticipate being able to engineer sometime this summer and then actually go out into some sort of a public bid with the goal of perhaps establishing public restrooms in that park by the fall of 2017, 2016, I'm sorry. I think that would be really reasonable in light of what we think are some financial opportunities coming our way. Okay, overall, our economic outlook is trending positively, although we're not seeing much by way of interest rates benefiting us with respect to investments, we're also not seeing inflation on the other end, so our purchasing power has been pretty good and continues to remain so. We've seen an uptick in property valuations, in fact, this is the first year in many years where we've actually added some value to the assessment role. We also see a lot of things going on in the housing market that are very positive with respect to recent sales and a number of sales taking place in this village where people actually were realizing prices on the sales of their home higher than their ask, so that's also a very good economic indicator of the market conditions in Pleasantville. We had a report from our tax attorney on the status of open surgiaries, which are basically tax refund cases that are before the court. We think the number in the aggregate is very manageable for the village going forward, I'm not concerned about what I see in terms of our exposure, at least not known exposures at this time. And then with respect to pension and healthcare obligations, again, there seems to be a considerable amount of effort to stabilize those costs, and we're seeing the results in this current year budget. We also believe that our fiscal policies and capital planning initiatives have been reasonable, we see some relief coming in our debt service down the road, a not-too-distant future where the village can in earnest start looking at some of its more pressing capital needs and come up with a strategy to pay those off as they go. Additionally, I have a collective bargaining obligation this year, our PBA contract expires on May 31, 2015, but I believe after several rounds of discussion that took place this spring, it appears that we should be able to settle this contract, perhaps even prior to the start of our next fiscal year. I mean, that's our goal, so it should be a pretty seamless transition into the upcoming fiscal year, knowing those costs upfront. We also are collectively talking about taking on some master plan update initiatives, this would be a very timely effort with respect to looking at opportunities in and around the village for growth and sustainability, and we've had a number of discussions with the community and boards that have been established to try to promote initiatives that will allow the village to look forward to operating in a responsible and sustainable manner. So I am going to close on that note. Judy, if you can hit the light?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, again. Sorry for my voice being a little, hopefully, I projected it well, but it's a little scratchy, it's allergy season. This is a public hearing, so if there are any comments, we should accept them tonight in terms of--
Just a question.
If there's any comments from our esteemed member of our audience. Before you do though, Jonathan, if any of my students are watching, I'm giving you a shout-out for staying up late and--
Oh, great.
Yes, 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 and for hopefully enjoying the other presentations as well, but if you are watching, that's great, you'll get a little extra credit if you can answer some questions on Thursday night about my presentation. So, okay--
The more percentage of our budget goes to--
Thank you. Well, I hope that wasn't too long and too winded, but--
No, it was a great overview, Patty.
Thank you. Or too nasally, the allergies are getting to me already, it's welcome to spring.
Go ahead.
No, no, please, I don't know any--
The, of course, I wonder if you could just highlight for people the issues that drive the 6-point-something percent increase in our general fund spending?
Yeah, sure.
That obviously is the number that jumps out, even though the tax increase is 1.59 in the tentative budget. It'd just be helpful for people to understand the dynamics of that.
Yep, most of that money is coming from a refund due to a surgiary, about $150,000 is going out toward a second payment to Stop &amp; Shop for the old, the former Stop &amp; Shop that now Henkel's property, from a settlement that we had to budget for. We also have, again, unknown expenses related to our PBA contract and negotiations, so there's been additional money thrown into contingency, but other than that, there was--
It's all right, I mean, that's half of it, I was seeking for work. I guess the point I wanted to make, first off, it's helpful for people to realize that looking at the budget year-to-year, obviously is what we're all doing, but that our budget is affected by one-time expenses like surgiary payments, and our revenues can be affected by one-shot revenues, and that means that when we look at the budget from year-to-year, we have to take into account the elements that are continuing versus the elements that are specific to a given year.
Well, yeah, I could tell you that most are going to be continuing, it's just the nature of the beast, and we're an ongoing concern.
Unfortunately.
They are, but in terms of general government support, that category is up the highest, up about 25%, and that's to cover, again, unallocated insurance and surgiary expenses. Our insurance premiums have also escalated because anytime we, and I should say that a couple of things happened there, they're budget-based typically, exposures, and also we were subjected to basically an audit of all of our buildings and grounds and contents this year. So we had a walkthrough and we've changed some of our valuations as a consequence of that, so we're paying more in insurance, because we have-- that, so we're paying more in insurance because we have more to insure. So when that happens, we just have to, you know, put it in perspective and deal with it, but I had to, had to deal with that as well. And it's, it's good to have proper values, you don't want to be underinsured. I mean, we have a catastrophic loss like some fire departments did and public works garages recently. If you're not adequately insured, you're, you know, you're just going to be spinning your wheels and trying to, you know, reconstruct your facilities and buy your, your assets. So we had, we had a total...
Brief interruption there to point out to the community, which we mentioned last time. Our own Patty Dwyer is soon to be the board president of NYMER, the New York Municipal Insurance Reciprocal, so...
Wonders never cease.
We have a certified insurance big wig right in our mix.
Yes, yes, totally into catastrophic loss now, it's just great.
It's an honor to Patty, but reflects very well upon this community, so thank you.
Thank you. The smallest increase is in public safety. I think the board had an opportunity to meet with the chief and to really go through the historical development of that department in the past few years since he's been chief. There's been a, a lot of changes with respect to human resources, but the budget itself has been very flat and very manageable. That category of expense is only up 2.9%, but then again, that's 100,000 in new spending, so it's all relative. Public Works is, is up about $175,000. There is a lot of effort that is going into storm system management this year. There's more money going into some maintenance items and maintenance line items and just a general approach to doing more road repair and other things. So the other large category of expense, that's basically employee fringes, 115,000 over last year. It's down, it's, it's only up, oh, well, it's up about 4.8%, but 115,000 is a lot on that budget. So those numbers are, they go up every year. This is the, you know, the windmill that we fight like Don Quixote every year, there's nothing I can do about the retirement system expenses, employee fringes, debt service, although as I said, there will be some substantial relief in that area too in the future. So that's where the 6.2% is, is coming from. I hope that answers the question.
It does, thank you. Steve, is your?
Yeah, I just had, one thing confused me on the, one of the slides of the water fund, you had a, I thought what I saw was a 3.7-ish million dollar prior line and a 3.8 million dollar proposed line and then a variance of 6-point-something percent.
There was left into, you did the math.
It didn't, it didn't look like it gelled with the numbers that were there.
Well, it could have been an older slide, it could have been, I'll go back and check it. I may have to check it, it may not have been carried over the prior year properly.
But the 3.8 top line that you have proposed on that slide, that's what we're going with, right?
That's, but, yes, that is. I can tell you what it is. Good eyes, Stephen, thank you.
Yeah, that's one that didn't make a lot of sense.
We're at 3.8 this year. The budgets...
It's 3.798, right?
And then last year was adopted at 3.798.
Right.
Yes.
Right, and then on that slide, you have a variance of 6.5%, which it's not...
It's not, nowhere near that, it's almost flat.
Yeah, it's less than 1, it's 1.18.
Yeah, thank you, yes, it's, good job.
I have a, I have a flag to carry.
Good job. Oh, yeah, that was, that's one of those slides I intentionally screw up because he was paying attention.
You can take that off the list, right?
Exactly. Thank you, Steve.
It's like leaving dirt on the floor to see if somebody really came to clean it.
Well, thanks for, thank you.
It's okay.
But that makes Steve realize he wants a budget book, too.
I do want a budget book.
One of my old ones.
I'll correct that slide.
Yeah, no, I didn't mean to call you out on it.
But the budget's essential, no, 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 please, it happens, it's okay.
Patty, how does the $525,000 from fund balance impact our fund balance position?
Yeah, it's a great question, that's a very important question. We expect to end this year even appropriating that money with about $2.7 million.
Yeah.
So we will be starting June 1.
What did we appropriate for this fiscal year, this current one?
We hardly appropriated anything, but we, we actually exceeded the tax cap by $300,000 last year because we did not use cash. We conscientiously made a decision to...
Exceed.
To exceed the cap, yeah, in order to save cash because we knew our cash position would be very precarious in the next few years. We're doing this little dance on the head of a pin until our debts...
I recognize also that this year, as opposed to last year, our conformance with the cap affects the opportunity for residents to get a...
Right, when you, when you, when you meet the cap or exceed the cap is important, those are important factors.
That's right, so last year, you know, it was very strategic.
Yeah, last year, there was no downside.
It was a strategic effort not to use cash last year. I mean, the appropriations was, was a very responsible plan, it wasn't that we went wild with spending, it's just that we needed to meet the budget last year with, with raising more tax revenue because we weren't subjected to this tax freeze law, we knew it was coming. And we also knew our cash position and we did not want to take a half million dollars every year from fund balance and eventually, you know, evaporate.
So what was our, did our cash position change between the end of last year and the anticipated end of this year? Are we ahead or behind or roughly flat on our cash position?
We started the year at 3.3 million.
Uh-huh, and we expect what?
The year we're in now.
Right, and we expect what by the end of this year?
Well, we expect to end at about 3.243.
Which is, well, it's a positive result because we dipped into that fund for a number of things in the course of the year, so that we're not part of the budget originally.
Throughout the year, we appropriated almost a half million of cash, just different things that we had to do. And one of, one of these things is that street sweeper, we decided to expend cash.
Instead of bond.
And I think we're going to keep it that way now instead of going into debt for it, you know, I mean, I would recommend we just use the cash.
And so this 5.25 million dollars is a couple-of-year plan. It's not just, oh, we're short, so we have to dip into savings, it's not just that, there was, it's, it's part of a larger economic plan for the village.
Well, given the constraints of the tax cap environment now, it's, it's a very difficult plan to manage.
I might also, I mean...
I mean, because we're not generating a lot of other revenues, it's just not coming in, but with some growth pending with Toll Brothers, you know, that will, that, you can, you can see your assessed valuations increase and hopefully other things, you know, from the macro point of view, the macroeconomic point of view will help.
Does this, there were a couple of projects approved, does this budget incorporate anticipated revenues from those sources, there, there, for parks and, and things like that, or does it not?
It does not. The only thing that may is a capital plan for...
So that's going to be additional revenue if it comes through this year?
Yes, the, the only capital plan that would be contingent upon other revenue is the bathrooms at Parkway Field. That would be contingent upon parkland fees being received by the...
And the additional revenue from, say, the Toll Brothers project will not be realized until the, the assessed value raises, is, is raised each year.
Right, the, the additional revenue from taxes, but the, but the parks, the parks and rec fee that they're going to be paying, that gets all paid at once.
That's correct.
That's not per house, per lot.
Correct, although it goes into a restricted fund.
It goes into...
When they draw a building permit, when they're one, they have to pay for the whole project.
That's the minute they put a demolition permit application in. I've had that discussion with them as recently as last week. They, they called and asked when that, when that fee would be due and we set upon issuance of demolition permit. We have a meeting with Toll Brothers tomorrow, so we believe that's all moving in the right direction very quickly now, so it's good.
And the project on the corner of Vegwood, they must have already paid.
They've paid a recreation...
Because they got a demo permit and demoed it.
$35,000 and that went into the improvements at the recreation center's parking lot.
Turning it over. I just wanted to highlight one piece, which is a, a pet peeve of mine, and that is Patty's slides usefully showed the stratospheric increase in our costs for retirement contributions, which are now leveling off and blessedly sinking a little bit, but the way the New York Retirement Fund is funded is, there is a big chunk of money that's invested by the New York State Comptroller's Office and then there are levies on each participant municipality based on their active payroll. So in, in recent years, especially during the decline of, of the investment markets, the, the percentage increase in our costs was dramatic and at the time, the state hatched a plan to allow communities to quote-unquote amortize the increase in their pension costs over a period of years by not paying it all in a given year. In essence, it was a mechanism by which communities that were forced by having their back to the wall could avoid current year expenses and in effect borrow money and pay them back with interest in future years. So this board has never done that, we have always paid as we go. I am unhappy to report that the county has amortized their investment annually each time they had that opportunity and in essence, that is, in my opinion, kicking the can down the road and producing higher costs in the future. So I'm pointing that out because this board blessedly was in a circumstance that we could do it. I know that there were some communities in New York State that couldn't, but we've paid current expenses in the current year.
And they charge some recurring financing rate?
They do.
It is a very high financing rate.
Then the county would be better issuing a bond.
So, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Randy.
The differences from what, you know, we, we had in our 320 printout in the tentative budget are that we, we firmed up the assessment roll and filed that on 4-1, right?
Yes, there's a final roll number, so that escalated the tax rate.
Tax rate, right, so that's why all these numbers, are we going to get new pages?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, well, we, you know, what we wanted to do is just wait to see if there was anything else coming out of this evening, you know, before we go back and re-roll.
Oh, no, Mr., somebody may have a scalpel over there, I don't know.
We rolled the budget, but, you know, generally, it's pretty much on, it's pretty much on point from what we thought it would be. We didn't see anything happen since the time we basically worked on the tentative budget to, through the hearings we've gone through. Every budget had a little bit of a tweaking to it, which is helpful, but the bottom line doesn't change much, so I went back to that water slide, the, the numbers are good, the percent was wrong, just that little arrow was from last year, so...
Looks like we have commentary from the public.
We do.
You need to be at the microphone, Miss Public.
Steve has wrangled over him.
I have another question, if you don't mind, sorry.
Finally, you can say that to him.
When you guys were on the phone with Moody's, right, when you did the rating call?
Yes.
Did, did the use of the tax cap, oh, use of the tax, oh, wait.
Fund balance.
Did the use of the fund balance come up? I mean, are they, what was their sense on our drawing of that and our, you know, did they ask you guys any further questions about what that?
They do, they always ask about what our, what, where we thought we would be at the start of next fiscal year. They thought we're in a very healthy position. I think they like to see 20%, we're very close to 20%.
Right, but the fact that we, we didn't use it last year and used it this year, they didn't seem concerned about that, I mean, you were though.
No, they did not, you know, this was a refunding, so I don't think it would have, it wouldn't have...
Risen over the radar as high.
Yeah, I mean, yes, there were lots of questions, we had, we had three different interviews, so to speak, we had a lot of people to impress, but they all came back with the same result, you know, basically that the village had a very stable financial picture and outlook.
So they didn't rise to them being concerned about the use of that fund balance?
No, that's why we maintained our AA2 rating and we were able to realize those savings, which is fantastic. So we're concerned, I mean, you know, I'm concerned, you know, I, I think a 4% variance is as big as we can really deal with, you know, I think that we're, we're going to eventually run into a wall, but if we're careful and we have nothing unforeseen, we could see how in the next couple of fiscal years, we can narrow that number a little bit.
Get it a little tighter.
Just with, you know, increased valuation, with less debt we're paying, you know, with other areas of the budget.
Right, the bonds rolling off.
Yeah, you know, that's, that's, that's...
And that will help that discussion with Moody's too, obviously, if the debt side of the balance sheet starts to go down.
And they see, they see that, Jonathan was on the call, they, they see that, they know that, they just want to know what we think about it, are we going to just fill it up with more spending?
Right, and we're going to bond out every other...
The first question they always ask us is, so what else are you borrowing? And we keep, nothing, nothing, you know, we don't...
Yeah, they probably don't hear that much.
Yes.
Yeah, no, we're not going to replace those bonds.
Although the reality is, there'll be plenty to consider doing.
There will be, yeah.
We've got lots of stuff on the right of our screen, so...
I mean, there is some things still that, you know, like, you know, you mentioned the master plan.
Yes.
I mean, I'd like to see a full update, except for Marble Avenue Corridor, of course, but, and that's extremely costly, it's prohibiting us from, from doing that and we have some great things that are going on here and we really need to update that.
Absolutely, the board has to start somewhere, even if you just start with the most, you know, important elements of, of the plan, which is probably central business district and the neighborhoods, you know, that's basically it, just get back into the, into the basics of the plan and just test, you know, the current plan for its capacity, you know, to, to, to deal with the current economic conditions.
Yeah, the world is a lot different now than it was when I was made.
Oh, my gosh, it's so outdated, it's...
I worked on it, 1995.
Yeah, it's just terrible, but, and you could see the, you know, what, you know, and I know that you could say a lot about the Marble Avenue Corridor, but I'll just say this, we were able to really address the issues on Marble Avenue because of the master plan update and I think that...
Yes, that was a limited scope, but it was, it was done very well.
It was done very well.
And we had good focus.
And it really, it really made a big difference over there, it made it very easy for us to implement some great things.
All right, comments from the public. The recently anointed member of the public.
You get a question in eight years from the public on your budget.
We have to state your name on that.
Jonathan Cunningham.
And where do you live?
14th and L. How many village employees do we currently have?
We have 64 full-time, I'm sure.
66.
Oh, how'd that happen, 66. There you go.
And then, I wasn't aware that we had any state aid, 1%, that's $140,000, is that CHIPS? What is that?
CHIPS.
Mortgage tax, right?
Yeah, mortgage tax.
Oh, is that, is that where it comes on?
Yes.
Per capita aid, we do get a per capita...
They require that we post mortgage tax to state aid, yes.
Under state aid.
And per capita.
Isn't that great? I'm going to show you.
I love Albany.
We get general revenue sharing on a per capita basis, it's about $50,000.
Okay, so it's mortgage, the mortgage tax.
And mortgage tax.
And finally, the water fund, so that's always contingent on raw water costs, which have been going up in recent years by almost 20% in some, one year, more than 20%.
This year, 7.2, it went up.
Okay, because that, that, that pounds that budget.
That's just the raw water cost, then we have all the treatment costs on top.
Yeah.
So for us to produce, to buy and produce 1,000 cubic feet, it's $16.50, that's our cost, our variable cost to produce.
What's the throughput of that system, just curious?
Sorry?
What's the throughput? I mean, what, what is our annual...
Max.
Yeah, what, no, what do we, what did we deliver last year or what are we going to deliver this year, I'm just curious.
In terms of volume?
Volume, how much water do you, I mean, do we know that?
Yeah, we use on average 1 million gallons a day.
Is that what it is?
On average. Yeah, peak flow a lot higher, up to 1.6.
You don't read those water reports we do?
Which, which, which actually, so the, the only other question I had, and then I'll let you guys bore each others to death for the next hour and a half, is the, it's me boring you to death.
Snarky. Instead of, instead of him boring, instead of us.
I'm the public now, all right? This is empowering.
Right.
The aqueduct work, which has been looming and actually, if they close it, I thought was scheduled for 2016, is that no longer the case?
It is no longer the case, they don't even believe they need to do that.
Do it anymore.
Oh, really? That's good news.
They pulled that back.
Very good news.
Yeah, all those cracks and collapses, okay, don't worry about it.
Don't worry about it.
Well, no, that's not why they were doing it, they were doing it for the ultraviolet plant down county and...
They changed their capital.
Okay.
Yeah, it's a great relief.
Yeah, because there were some scary numbers coming up.
Yeah, those were very scary numbers, you're absolutely right. The electricity alone, pumping out of the other, yeah.
Good job, thank you.
Thank you, Citizen Cunningham.
Thank you. Mary, you had said 65 employees, right?
66.
66.
Okay, because it's, so it's 11 management and then there's 35 CSCA, 20 PBA, that sound right to you?
A little higher PBA, 100 PBA.
Okay, so I must have miscounted.
Under the chief, 21 under the chief.
Okay, thought it was only 20 PBA, what?
PBA's at 20.
Are you kidding me, right?
No, no, very quick. Shane McGaffey, 85, Nana Hagan wrote, I just wanted to point out, you know, this is Jonathan's first meeting on that side and notice how much better dressed he is, so...
Thank you, Citizen McGaffey.
He wanted to, he wanted to be taken seriously. All right, any other questions on the budget?
Well, I just, I have one, I just want to thank you very much, all of you, because I, you know, you never cease to amaze me as, all these years, that sitting, when you sit down with a department head, not only are they well-prepared, and I think Patty, you have a lot to do with that, but the, the fact that the budget has been filtered in so many different ways by you guys and you just do a wonderful job and, and you make our job a lot easier, thank you, because your crunch of these numbers is, is not an easy thing and now our crunchers are leaving, so...
Well, no, we, we certainly.
But we got a new cruncher, sorry. Cruncher in chief.
We take this very seriously, this is it, this is like our road show.
This is it, yeah.
This sets the tone for the next 12 months for us, and we don't do this right.
Patty Dwyer, April 13, in the big room.
Yeah, so, you know, we, and we, we respect your efforts, we understand what you have to do. I mean, you know, you're going to bear the burden of this when people ask you, what's going on with all my money?
Yeah.
So we want to be sure you're informed and you're aligned, though that's our obligation to make sure that you've got everything you need, you know. And I, and as I said, I, I'm just very fortunate to work with people who are very talented and, and very committed to making sure this all goes well, so.
No doubt, I echo everything that you said.
Thank you so much.
Well done, ladies.
Thank you.
Been around the block a few times, and it is so much easier than it used to be, so. All right, with that, is there a motion to close the public hearing on the 2015-2016 tentative budget?
So.
Second, is there a call in favor?
Aye.
This is probably carrying a close. Again, for the reference of anybody who wants to dig into the detail, the budget is posted on our website at Pleasantville-NY.gov. We will be looking to approve a final budget at our next meeting, which is April 27, and so any comments anybody might have between now and a few days before that are welcome, so. With that, we'll go to the resolution, Steve, number 63.
Resolved that pre-check register dated April 13, 2015, covering electronic check red, numbers 2014 through 2067, and pre-check numbers 80180 and through 80323 have been reviewed and they are hereby approved as listed below, from the general fund, the special purpose fund, the water fund, the refuse fund, the capital fund, the trust and agency fund, and the trust and agency fund, for a total of $270,111.3.
Is there a second?
Second.
Comments or questions?
I hate to do this, but I actually have two.
Go for it.
Patty, real quick, on the, on the check register?
Yes.
I saw we paid for the water main break, do we have insurance on that kind of thing?
Do we have, we do not have insurance on water main breaks.
Anthony Ferrerito, it's outside the district.
Oh.
Yeah, that was, right.
The homeowners, that, that.
Right.
So we'll get that back?
We do have to, yeah, we do bill non-districted areas, the direct expense of repair, because those are private water mains.
We'll get it back from the individual homeowners. So just to recap for the audience who at home who didn't hear that, Noreen Regan pointed out that the water main break was outside the village but in the water district, and so our costs for that will be reimbursed by the district, the homeowners involved.
Yeah.
Awesome, and then the only other question I have was that, the $62,000 for the pool, that's it, right? That's the final payment?
Uh, no.
No.
No, they're, they're almost there.
I thought they were almost.
But that was requisition number eight, I think that we've had a change order or two, and we also have one more pending. There should be one more payment, they should be finished.
Yeah, because they have a little ways to go.
Or we have one more, they're on track, though.
Yeah, yeah, they're, they are on track.
We're in pretty good shape.
Well, I was there today, I, there's a long way to go, I, I think.
They probably have a lot of little stuff.
It's looking good, keep positive.
Okay, I just wanted to ask, thank you.
All right, any other questions on the check register? All in favor?
Aye.
I motion approved, Minnie 64.
Resolved that the Board of Trustees has reviewed the minutes of the regular meeting held on March 23, annual organization meeting held on April 6, and a special meeting held on April 6, 2015, and they are hereby approved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Comments or corrections on the minutes? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion approved, Colleen 65.
Resolved that the Board of Trustees hereby approves the request from the Pleasantville Day Committee to close Memorial Plaza for the Pleasantville Day celebrations on Saturday, May 16, 2015, from 6:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., and further resolved that the Board of Trustees authorizes the police chief to post no parking signs from 6:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. on Saturday, May 16, 2015, and to tow all vehicles in violation of this temporary parking restriction.
There a second?
Second.
Pleasantville Day is shaping up to be a great, great thing. This letter comes from our new chairperson, Petra Zorkman.
Who's done an amazing job.
Who's doing a great job with assistance from Peter Rogavin and Marlene Canapi. The longstanding chairwoman for Pleasantville Day, Ginny Brentano, retired from this gig after many, many years of great service, so an exciting day, mark your calendars. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion approved. Joe, 66.
Resolved that the Board of Trustees hereby approves the 2015-16 snow and ice agreement with the New York State Department of Transportation.
There a second?
Second.
Patty, this is the same per mile deal?
It is, this is a, it's an agreement that basically is an evergreen agreement with the state. It does have escalation clauses in, depending on the severity of the winters, and in fact, we just got a payment two weeks ago for 2013-14's winter. So the state is, they do honor their obligations.
Just leave.
They do catch up, but, this is from Anvil Road and Broadway.
Amounting to 10.4 contract lane miles.
That is correct, for our snow removal and road maintenance on those roads for winter weather.
Okay, any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion approved, 67, Steve.
Resolved that the Board of Trustees hereby authorizes the village administrator to sign the inter-municipal agreement with Westchester County for the transfer of organic yard waste.
Is there a second?
Second.
Patty, you want to?
Yeah, sure, this is a, this is an opportunity for us to take advantage of if we do not, going forward, have the opportunity to dispose of our brush and yard waste in Mount Pleasant. Currently, we have a great IMA with the town, we take our yard waste to one of their sites up on Hardscrabble, we just are able to tip there free of charge as long as we supply them with, with some replacement parts for their chippers and their blades, if you remember, it's a really nice opportunity for us. However, if there's ever a reason, capacity or otherwise, that we'd have to go somewhere else, particularly like a big storm where there's a lot of activity and lots of debris, we would have to go into the county's facility, and this would give us the opportunity then to be, you know, to find another site, basically, to, to tip our, our brush and yard waste. We're not bound, you know, to bring everything to the county if we join in the member IMA, we just have another resource available to us, so we would not, you know, use this unless we had to. The tipping fee's about $16.25 a ton, right now we pay nothing, so.
I want to ask a related question on it. When we, wherever we bring our yard waste, and we compost, we compost, we bring it elsewhere, they compost, and so on.
Right.
But I noticed our compost, and I don't mean to get off track off the resolution, but it's related, our compost is full of stones and rocks and a little asphalt, and it's not, it's not yard waste compost, so I'd like to talk about that sometime.
Okay, well, we will, then.
We'll have a work session on compost.
Thank you.
Any other questions about 67? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion approved, 68, Minnie.
Resolved that the Board of Trustees hereby authorizes the village clerk to notice a public hearing for Monday, April 27, 2015, 8:00 p.m. prevailing time, 80 Wheeler Avenue, Pleasantville, New York, to hear comments as it pertains to a local law amending Chapter 173, vehicle traffic, Section 173-57, Schedule 9, stop intersections slash Sunnyside Avenue as follows, Section 1, amend Chapter 173, vehicle traffic, same sections as listed above, to delete this, to take out the stop signs on Sunnyside Avenue in both directions of travel under the railroad bridge, and that's it. I thought there was another part to that.
No, it's pretty simple.